Unless they've just recently joined Billy Giblin and Stephanie Herring. So they probably will be joining us soon, I would imagine.
Okay, now we're unmuted.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, is it not?
Yes, yes.
So I'll ask the call to be ordered for Wednesday, August 26th. Cynthia, please take the role.
Planning Commission meeting is called to order on August 26, 2020 at 7:01 PM. Chair Cornell.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Yeah.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Glasser.
Here.
Commissioner Parry.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Present.
And we'll try Commissioner Giblin. Not quite yet. Not quite yet, but we will look at hopefully they will be able to join us. Go ahead, Chair Cornell.
All right. We have to recall the first item on the agenda. Am I speaking clearly? Can you hear me, Cynthia?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Approval of minutes for the July 22nd meeting. They look fantastic. Want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Before you do, I just want to make a quick note that I sent an 11th hour email to you guys, which you may not have gotten. There was a couple edits, a couple minor edits in the minutes that the folks from the Little Bear PUD had noted. Just a minor change on the roof at the fire department and a code section that I had quoted. So I have those changed already. So this motion would be for the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Cynthia. Does anybody like to make that motion?
Was that Jim?
No, that was Chris Parry.
Okay, Commissioner Parry, thank you.
So then we'll read this thing too. So.
No, no, no.
amended the amended minutes. Anybody call for a, I guess you should call roll call because we're all online here. So do a roll call for the amended minutes approval.
Sure. Did I miss who seconded that?
Oh, you did, but I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll do the roll call vote. Vice Chair Williams.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah.
Commissioner Parry.
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser.
Yes.
Chair Cornell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Yes.
And let me try again. Commissioner Giblin? Not quite yet. And are you here? Okay, great. And Commissioner Herring? Has Commissioner Herring made it yet?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. And you wanted to vote yes on the minutes?
Yes, I will.
Awesome. Thank you.
I believe she was at the meeting, so she needs to abstain.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner.
No, he's right. Sorry, I was on vacation in July.
She needs to abstain.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder, Steve.
I, maybe I could get staff's input, but I was supposed to read.
That comes later.
Yeah, I think so at the public hearings. But I leased part of the memo that we were all sent about the script for the planning commission for the meeting. And we've actually had this come up twice already in this few minutes. People saying who's speaking. So we need to actually make sure that this is Roger Cornell speaking or Steve Williams. So we need to actually say our names so that people can certainly Cynthia can understand. We all can understand who is addressing who. So that's part of that memo. And I'll read that once we get to the planning commission hearing part. But that would be something right off the top. We need to follow that procedure because people are also on the phone and cannot follow who's speaking. So let's try to do that. All right, so the next.
This is Miranda. I just want to piggyback off of that. And also, please, there's so many people on to mute yourselves. Because it's a lot of work to mute people for them. So please just make sure you're muted if you're not talking.
Very good. So the next item then would be the initial items, which is the staff report. And Karen, do you want to take that or?
Sure, sure. Commissioner, it's great to be with you tonight. You've got quite an agenda with three public hearings, so I'm not going to talk too much. I do want to, though, recognize the success of our town cleanup day and the work that Nikki Dunn and her team did along with Miranda Fisher. And our mayor showed up and he volunteered as well. And I saw several of you too, commissioners. So thank you for coming and participating despite the fact that it was COVID and we had to delay it and come up with a whole new way of handling the day. It was hugely successful. We had about 119 households, I believe, which is only one less than last year. So we feel like it was a great success. We diverted a lot of waste from the landfill. And a lot, most, I think a majority of what was brought to us was all stuff that could be recycled. So it was a great event. We have some updates, which actually now need to be updated again as far as town hall hours go. We are, but Miranda, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. Like Karen said, there are some updates to this. The visitor center was at town hall, but has now been moved back to the visitor center. They were over here assisting with the front desk position for about six weeks. But our new admin assistant is set to start next week. So they're back over in their building. But town hall will still remain open Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10 to 2, just while we focus on training and then we'll adjust hours after that. Town staff are available, however, Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. Just outside of that 10 to 2 timeframe, an appointment needs to be made with us so we know that someone's coming.
Great. Thank you, Miranda. As far as our Black Lives Matter update, the two of the churches in town, the Presbyterian Church along with St. Rita's, are jointly presenting a series. And it's, the first one was anti-racist Ally Ship. Hello? Which I was lucky enough to be able to attend. It was amazing. I know Miranda was on as well until she had to go to a boards and commission meeting. But I did put information about that workshop as well as information on how if you're interested, you could also attend those. We did have some good, good update from RTD. TD, right now, they are not looking at cutting services to Netherland. They will probably continue to offer the reduced schedule as they have been doing since they started up again after COVID. So the one thing that they're waiting to hear about is what Eldora ends up doing with the ski season. Because of course, that will impact it as well. But they're already trying to figure out and plan around that, how they could still make that work. I feel like the update for coronavirus is probably already outdated since I wrote it. But the good news is our state's actually doing very well. If you look at the map that the Center for Disease Control posts on their website, we are an island of white, surrounded by orange, burnt orange and red. And what that means is that our state has the least amount of new cases happening in this area. So it's really a good thing. And the governor is really accrediting it to the, some of the recent changes to the health order, including last call for alcohol was 10 o'clock. Now they have extended it to 11 o'clock. But they were seeing that later into the evening is where they were getting some outbreaks in some establishments late at night after people have had enough to drink where they stop using their best judgment. So anyways, Colorado is doing really well. Testing, the turnaround times have greatly improved in the last few weeks. Now we're looking at two to three day turnarounds. Also Boulder County is working on getting more tests available throughout the county. And hopefully, we're hoping that that might include Netherland. There is still lots of ways for people in Netherland to get tested, you know, by going to some of these sites down below. Also, Dr. Camerata has said he's got plenty of tests available. But we're hoping that there might be an opportunity for us to have kind of a drive up site like you've seen in other places in the surrounding counties. As far as community development goes, very busy in the planning department. There's been a 50% increase in inspections related to permanent activity. Even though there has been a 25% decrease in plan reviews when compared to last year, it's still very, very busy. We've got some updates on our advisory boards, which I think I'm going to let you all read. And the community centers, since you do and Public Works, since you do have such an intense meeting. But if there is anyone who has a question regarding any of those things, you're welcome to ask them now or contact a staff. So I think that, I think I'll stop now.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Oh, excuse me. This is Karen Blakemore. I have a question on the page 18 that you might be able to answer, Karen.
Page 18?
Uh, page 18.
Okay.
Uh, there's a new commercial building that is $6,125,000, 531. Do you know the location of that new commercial building?
I have to think about it a minute.
So those are 2019 data.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. I was going to say, I am not coming up with it in my brain. So that's the comparative numbers here. We do the 2020 and the 2019, so you can see the comparison between them.
So, uh, do you know what building that was in 2019 by any chance?
Um, 2019. Cynthia? Did you recall offhand? Karen, one of us can follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. It seems like a million years ago.
Hi Karen, this is Jim Reese. I had a quick question. I saw the part on Public Works report that some of the previous special sidewalks, drainage sidewalks have been repaired with concrete replacing what had been the impervious surface.
Yes.
And is that going to be the case for all of that, including everything over there by the post office?
Well, it's a collaboration right now that we've had with the DDA where they've been contributing funds to it. So we're going to continue to do that as long as we have funding. But I just want to remind everyone that the TIP project is also going to include replacing some of those surfaces with hard surface. So it's, so in the next few years, you know, two, three years, we should address them all.
Eventually, they'll all end up being like, like what we have pictured here?
That's the goal.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other questions about the staff report? If not, then we can move to the action items, which will be the continuation of the plan unit development. 575 North Peak to Peak Highway, Little Bear. And it's a public hearing. And I should read the, I know everybody was sent the script for the planning commission chair. And notes up there before the first public hearing, the chair should read the following verbatim. I did talk to Miranda and seen how we all have copies of this.
There are people on that don't.
I understand. So I'll only read, certainly the, so I'll start it in there. Miranda or staff, if I should keep continuing, let me know if I've been incomplete. But I'll try to paraphrase. I'll read all of the verbatim and part of it paraphrased. "The town is currently operated under a state emergency order issued by the town board of trustees and the governor related to COVID-19. And the governor has imposed social distancing requirements that make a physical meeting impossible. Based on that findings, the planning commission has agreed to hear quasi judicial matters in the virtual meeting space and in accordance with the telephone electronic meeting participation policy during times of emergency as amended on April 16, 2020. The planning commission chair describes the hearing procedures as follows. The town staff, application introduction, summary, followed by questions from the planning commission. The next step would be applicant testimony followed by questions from planning commission. Third, public comment for members of the audience who wish to speak on the proposal, three minutes per person. Four would be applicant's response or rebuttal. Five would be closing the hearing, discussion, and then discussion and decisions by the planning commission. Would any applicant's adjutant hearing, the procedure, all applicants should respond." So at this time, and I'll give this statement again at each hearing. But Dennis Bulion and Ellen Mode, Bulion, are you there?
So they just sent me a message that they may have lost sound. So I need to work on getting them added back on.
All right. I'll continue then and we'll ask that question when we get there. Is there anybody at the commission that needs to disqualify themselves? If not, then we will continue. And I actually did then. We have kind of the instructions, as I said, which I mean a good job of, of each speaker announcing who they are and referring to questions so that we can follow who is speaking at the time. Staff, have I covered this well enough? Karen, is this a, you proceed?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Then we will move to the public hearing.
That's all right.
All right. Continuation of the public hearing of plan unit development, 575 North Peak to Peak Highway, Little Bear Village. Are the Bulions there now? I think it's.
I haven't heard back from them. They want me to call them.
I think it's essential that we, would you agree we need to hold up until we hear from them? Even for the staff comments?
I was going to say, they are familiar. We did meet with them yesterday. And so they are familiar with the staff report. If you wanted to start that, and I'll get them on the phone.
So should I proceed?
Uh, yes, Miranda is saying that they have heard everything in the staff report because they did meet with staff. So her suggestion is to go ahead and let Cynthia begin the presentation.
Thank you, Karen. So we certainly have got, this is our third review of this. So Cynthia, could you just give us a rundown of the aim and where we're at at this point?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, commissioners. This is a consideration of a final planned unit development utilizing the Netherland Municipal Code, Section 16-88, the density increase. This is a continued public hearing for Miss Bulion and Ellen Mode Bulion for the 575 North Peak to Peak Highway property, Lot 2, Netherland, Replat Block 36. They will be here at some point to discuss again their final planned unit development, Little Bear Village. They would like to utilize the density increase. They would like to create a total of four units by the square footage on the property, which is 11,761 square feet. They would, utilizing that density increase, be able to have five units. They are asking for a total of four units in two duplexes. They did have some items as they came to their, the last hearing on July 22, 2020. And the planning commission voted to continue to the, continue the public hearing to tonight, August 26, to give the applicants more time to provide additional materials. You will see additional materials in the packet. And they did include aspects. They did note the commission had requested more information about site drainage, a detailed landscape plan, a complete site plan to scale with contours and elevations showing the driveway, parking setbacks, specific dimensions able to allow the determination and functionality of said driveway and properly label the elevations. They met with town staff and they discussed some of these items. And then they provided a presentation, which you will see shortly. I can answer any questions for everyone. Otherwise, I'm going to step out of the way and let the chair turn it over to the applicants if they are present.
The applicants are on the phone with me now.
Great. Anyone from the commission have any questions for me? Okay, I just want to note when we go to the public hearing portion that I do have a timer here for three minutes. So I will, before people speak, I will let you know that I'm going to start the timer so I can give you your full three minutes and try not to cut you off. But I just want to be clear that we will do that. Doesn't sound like there's any questions for me. Chair, do you want to direct the applicants?
Yes.
And I want to just remind the chair, the planning commission, that before, as the email I sent out, because this is their third time coming for the commission, we're asking that questions be asked after each presentation slide rather than waiting until the end. And the applicants are prepared to then answer questions after each slide.
Okay, Dennis and Ellen, then please take the floor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Miranda, for bringing up just the intro slide. That's obviously intro. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. What I'll be doing is going over the 18 requirements for the final PUD from Section 16155 to make sure that we address all of them. And also the yard and both requirements from Section 1633. So on this page, during this narrative, we'll be addressing four. The first is Section 161L, areas of known hazards such as 100-year flood plain, rockslide, subsidence, or other similar hazards in mineral areas of potentially economically feasible extraction value. Two A, an explanation of the character of the planned unit development and the manner in which it has been planned to take advantage of the planned unit development regulations. Two B, a statement from the present ownership, excuse me, a statement of the present ownership and written description of all the land included within the planned unit development. And two C, a brief statement describing the environmental impact of the planned unit development in specific reference to the performance standards identified in this chapter. Because this is Miranda referenced, this is our third time here. I'm not going to read this word for word, also in the interest of time. So I'm going to skip down to a paragraph. Our proposed redevelopment project we are calling Little Bear Village and is planned multi-family residential project consisting of two new duplex townhomes for a total of four residential housing units. The project takes advantage of the PUD regulations by utilizing the increased square footage option for multi-family units in the neighborhood commercial zone. Each unit will consist of its three bedrooms, two and a half baths, which will help to address the ongoing housing needs outlined in the Netherland Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, I just want to note, according to the Bowen Report that was published in 2014 or 2015, I believe, which I did look through, Netherland, much of the housing stock in Netherland is considerably older and has not been properly maintained and is not up to current code. And in certain instances, it's actually unsafe. So this does help to address, these will be brand new units. And they will be all to current code. Additionally, in recent conversations with some of the community housing advocates, the decline in school rates, we discussed with them as a compared to the town. And providing additional housing will help to hopefully alleviate that. We're hopeful that the Little Bear Village will be able to address some of these areas of concern with housing while also helping to add to the growth and success of this community. The character of the planned unit development will highlight the previous history of Little Bear schools, utilizing salvage logs where possible. And materials from the existing schools which is to be deconstructed.
So that's probably because you guys just rejoined on your computer. That's why you're going to.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So bizarre. I will hang up. That just came back all of a sudden.
So we're going to go back to the computer. Okay, all right. Thank you, Miranda.
Um, okay. So we will utilize salvage logs where possible and materials from the existing school, which is to be deconstructed. It will reflect, it will reflect the rustic nature and natural colors of the open landscape surrounding Netherland and is of overall compatible architectural design with the neighborhood. Our goal is for Little Bear Village to be compatible with and complement the neighborhood buildings in the immediate vicinity. New and existing single-family two-story homes, new and existing multi-family two-story, and the existing height of the commercial and government buildings. Open space will be landscaped with aspen trees, rock mulch, low water vegetation, and pervious crushed limestone to facilitate proper drainage and water runoff. Additionally, a professional drainage plan is under development by Rocky Ridge Civil Engineering. This is a change from our last meeting. So we have added that. There are no known areas of potential hazard. The flood plain to the north does not affect the property. The project complies with all PUD requirements and meets all town codes. The environmental impact of the project is expected to be minimal based on the following. For code, the maximum lot coverage is 40%, which would be 4704 square foot according to our lot size. Our project is actually utilizing 29.2% or 3444 square feet. For code, the maximum height of lot is 35 feet. Our project is, has now been adjusted to 28.4 feet. And I will get into that a little more when we view the elevations. For code, the maximum density for an 11,761 square foot lot in the empty zone is five units. Our project is four. While the parking is off-street and self-contained in Little Bear Village, the landscape plan will provide screening and buffering. We are, we plan to have a perimeter fence surrounding the property, which will provide safety to any potential pets or children. I did want to address a commissioner comment from the last meeting. I don't remember which commissioner it was, that she had a concern about potential vehicles possibly falling off the road. And it's our understanding, if that happens, we would take that up with the town to help CDOT address any issues with the highway. All tenants will be required, per their lease, to store belongings inside their units. And for this slide, that concludes the requirements that I was going to talk about. Are there any questions, commissioners, regarding this slide?
Commissioner Giblin, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I was on meeting early on too. I apologize you couldn't hear me. We haven't had good internet since our electricity was off earlier today in Old Town. So I appreciate your efforts to come together with all this information and make some of these concessions. And also appreciate you brought the building down to 28 feet. Obviously, you have some freedom in that. But I guess I just want to point out from all the public comments, I'm seeing that the building height remains a stressor for your neighbors. Other than that, I appreciate the detail and the extra, extra plans that you provided.
On this next slide, we'll be addressing from section 1655, PUD requirements. 1A, the boundary, overall size and a legal description of the site. 1G, the internal vehicular circulation system, basically the driveway, and the turning movement and turning radius, the off-street parking areas, and including the refuse disposal. That was from I, from 1J, areas which are to be dedicated for open space, and from 1M, the landscape plan illustrating the size, type, and location of my materials. Okay, so, if you could zoom in a little bit, Miranda, at the top where it says 4th Street, I'm gonna go through that. Everyone can see, thank you. So this is 1A, the legal description, Lot 2, Netherlands, replat at Block 36. Size of lot is 11,761 square feet, acreage is .27. The boundary, it's bounded by 4th Street on the north, peak-to-peak highway on the west, Third on the south, and Caribou Street on the east. The open space required is 25%, which for this size lot would be 2,940 square feet. The open space that we have dedicated is 33%. I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble reading. 3,939. Okay, the landscape plan I'll discuss next, and that is down at the bottom. So for the landscape plan, you'll see, we have three aspen trees planned, we'll be utilizing five boulders. This is along the west side of the property, so Miranda might need to kind of be scrolling while we're doing this. And then in front of each unit, there are four planner beds, their size is 2.5 feet, I'm sorry, 2x5 suite. And then each planner bed will have three one-gallon, one-gallon flowering shrubs and mulch. The next thing we'll discuss is the yard and bulk requirements from section 1633. And so along the back, the rear yard setback is 15 feet. You can see we have a variety ranging from 27.1, 28.7, 27 square feet, and this is between the back of the townhomes to peak-to-peak highway to our property. The side yard setback is five feet, and you'll see we have that on the south side. We actually have quite a bit more on the north side than five feet. Rear yard setback is 25 feet, and we have 26 feet.
Ellen, whoever has their TV on, can you please mute? Because it's really distracting on this end to listen to whatever program is. Sorry, interrupted.
No, no, thank you. The next thing we're going to address, at the top, on the, more towards the north entrance, coast of 4th Street, you'll see where it says trash, that is our refuse disposal site, will have an enclosed place for the dumpster. The parking, as has been noted before, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but we are required to have 13 parking spaces, which we do, including the garages. As far as the, the turning radius, that was a question, so we have, from our last meeting, we've provided additional detail. For the 22-foot turn radius, that was, and these radiuses were taken from, I believe, Dennis is gonna correct me here if I mistake this, but that was for a large sedan, and then what were the pickup?
24 feet.
24 feet, and we have 26. And I believe, this concludes what we were just, this is all the requirements that were addressed on this slide. Were there any questions from the commissioners?
Do you have any questions?
This is Karen Blakemore, I have a couple questions. So, my first question is, is the, does the 15-foot with driveways support two-way traffic? So, in other words, could you have a car driving into the development and one driving out at the same time?
Is there anything I can do?
I don't think so. That would probably require like a 20-foot driveway. There's space to make a wide driveway, but I don't think it's necessary to have two. It's not, it's not.
It's not a two-way street, right? It's a private driveway.
Yeah.
We can see what the building code is for that.
Then my other question is, can you, can you test what areas are included in the public open space? For example, are the landscaped areas at the front doors included? Is the area inside the fence patios included?
Yes, so I will tell you how we arrived at that number. So, along the back, we use the smallest, or the greatest. We have 27 by 103, using the 27 as an example, which equals 2,781 square feet. The 10-foot in between the two buildings, that's 10 feet by 42, that's the building footprint, that's 420. There is five feet where the five-foot setback is by 42, that's 210, and that right there is 3,411. And then included in the front planners, which are each 10 by 17 per building, are each 170 square feet, which totals 340. So we actually...
Okay, thank you, that answers both my questions. I personally don't know what the requirements are as far as having two-way traffic at the driveway. Maybe some of the other commissioners would know what's required there.
It's not clearly stated in the headroom.
Yeah.
Does, this is Roger, does that, staff have any comments on the two-way drive?
Yes, Commissioner Cornell, there's private driveway standards, and that's in section 17, or excuse me, section, chapter 11 is streets, and that has private driveway standards in section 11-70. So we can take a look at that and see if, if there's qualifications there. There's aspects about grade and width in there, and the other consideration, and you might have already done this, Ellen, is make sure that the fire department, you know, whatever access they have, they'd be able to use that.
Right, that was addressed at the last meeting for the minutes, I didn't have any concerns.
Okay, does, any other commissioners have questions this time about the landscape?
Yeah. Billy Gibbin, I just had a quick question about that vehicle there in the southeast corner, it just looks like getting in and out of there, if that's the scale, would be challenging.
I'm sorry. Dark areas, but just off of driver, right? So it's really not any kind of different surfaces, but it's really just a big wide block.
As well as alleys, I don't know if you need to come a little closer?
Okay. 24-foot radius parking criteria, and that is, those dark areas are just, designate that there's the driveway into the garage, but that's all the same surface, the driveway, and that enters into the garage, so it's kind of just blends all together. We just separated it out, so you just be looking more clear for the, for the presentation.
Right, and it has the same turning radius as the, as the first two. The truck is a little bit offset in the drawing, but it's okay.
Okay.
This is Karen, and I just wanted to let folks know that I did look at the code, and for private driveway, they only need to be 12 feet wide. That's section 1170, says it has to have a 12-foot wide travelway.
Thank you so much for looking that up.
Sure.
How it would appear we need that. If that could be included in this section, if it could be included, that would be helpful for future use. If there are no other questions from this slide, you should go to the next slide, Miranda, thank you.
All right, Billy, do you have any other questions, Billy? Does anybody have any comments or questions?
No comments, no questions on that one.
All right, then, this is Commissioner Cornell. I'm with Billy, and I'm certainly not going to let this one parking spot stop, because I questioned this last time, and it's certainly not gonna stop the projects from moving ahead, because overall, it's a very good project, but that last southeast parking space, you have 26 feet total. If you have a 16-foot car, I actually have a car that's 20 feet, that would mean that you would have six feet to back out. It's virtually, so as you do your, as you do your move forward and have your tenants move in, I think in some ways, that's gonna be very limited parking, and we just need to recognize that, yes, you could have a point about having a turning radius, the other vehicles at 29 feet are the two middle parking spaces, and that's borderline acceptable, or at least, let's at least face reality that the southeast corner, someone's gonna have to actually just kind of back all the way out. I don't know exactly how they're gonna do it, but, or it's gonna just be for a very, very, and they are making vehicles now that are 10 and 12 feet long, so it's gonna be one of those small vehicles, but it would not be a full-size vehicle that could actually get in there, because it, truly, you'll have five or six feet to make that turn. So, but this should not stop this project from going forward, but please, let's recognize that this is a difficult area, and a little bit of a concern for that corner, and Billy, you was very right to bring that up. Does anybody else have any questions on the landscape parking on this slide?
Chair Cornell, I would only add that, that's in good weather, so in the wintertime, there may be snow, and they may have less than six feet to work with. And if that's a, if it's a one-way entrance, trying to back out of that, or back in, could be problematic.
Thank you for your comments, I just want to say that there is additional parking on the north, and maybe, I mean, only one, one parking garage per unit, so large vehicles may need to park outside. There is also additional parking space, we didn't need to put it in, so we didn't, but you can actually get two vehicles, maybe not two giant trucks, but two vehicles on the trash can, on that side, the far north fence line. Okay, no more comments or questions?
Perhaps you guys can put up a sign, this is Jim Reese, that says compact vehicles only, and just solve that.
Thank you.
You see that all, you see that everywhere.
Yeah, we'll have to steal that from that Home Depot or something, that idea. Okay, the next slide is, section 16155, we'll be covering 1C, 1D, excuse me, 1C, which is the proposed land uses and their respective acreage, 1D, which is the location and size or building envelopes of the buildings, 1F, which is the density and type of dwellings, 1K, the location and design of proposed signs and exterior lighting plan, lighting plan will come on the next slide, but we will address the sign here, and then the anticipated utility requirements. So at the top of the, where 4th Street is, we have the dwelling types that we stated before, two duplex townhomes, total of four units, the density, each unit is three bedroom, two and a half baths, approximately 1491 square feet. The land use acreage is multi-family residential, .27 acreage. Anticipated utility requirements, there's a 200 amp electrical service per unit, and we will utilize the existing gaps, tap, sewer tap, and one-inch water. Signage, right at the north entrance, to the right of the trash area, but on the other side, we propose to put a 30 by 30 sign, which is on the, 30 inches, sorry, yeah, yeah, 30 inches by 30 inches sign on the north side of the entrance. For section 16, 1D, the building envelopes, each building has a 42-foot by 41-foot footprint. I believe that is, covers all on, on that particular file. Are there any questions from the commissioners on this?
I would just make, I just would make a note about the utilities, that the determination of, of what that utility demand will be, will come from engineering analysis that's presented to us at the building phase, and then the tasks would be sized accordingly. So, it may be a one inch now, but we'd have to look at what the demand would be from their engineering, and have that engineering analysis, our on-call, do that review, and we determine the proper.
We understand and agree with that.
Thanks.
This is our Chair Cornell, does anybody from the planning commission have any questions on this slide? If not, then I guess we could proceed to the next slide.
Thank you. On this slide, we'll be addressing requirement from section 16155, 1E, the architectural character of all buildings and structures, including their maximum height, and 1K, the location and design of proposed signs and exterior lighting. So on this one, we may need to make it a little bit bigger, the lighting, there are, each unit has a sconce light on either side of the garage, there is a flush mount, a little hard to see, by the front door for each unit. And those, and that is the lighting for the units. For the maximum height, the pitch has been modified from a 12-on-six from our last meeting to a 12-on-five pitch, which now brings the heights down to 28.4, 28 feet or inches. The architectural character, the buildings will have hardy siding and trim, wainscoting, reclaimed. reclaimed material from Little Bear School deconstruction as possible. We won't know that until we do the deconstruction. And it will have a hip and valley roof with architectural fiberglass shingles. Regarding storage, that wasn't part of the requirements, but it was brought up as a concern last time. So we wanted to address it, that we have oversized garages. There is going to be storage provided inside each unit for all their personal belongings. It will be in the lease, and there is also additional storage under the stairs. And if there are, no, if there are any questions from the commissioners on this slide?
Did you mean just a hip roof or? There's just going to be four sides to that roof, right? It's not no valleys? For sake of aerodynamics, you were talking about?
I think on the east, the west, the east view on the west elevation, I think they show a valley on that, because there is a little bit of a, a cantilever on their back, on that east, on that west side, that puts in a valley.
And also, that's, all the setbacks were calculated off of the cantilever, not off of the footprint.
Okay. Appreciate you bringing down the roof height again. You know, it still seems like people aren't crazy about the height. I know you had mentioned a flat roof idea, but just point that out.
We'll have additional comments regarding the roof and the adjustment wheel. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we can go to the next slide.
Before, before we move ahead, can I just remind everybody, this is Commissioner Cornell. When you ask a question, make sure we know who's asking the question, so state your name. Thanks.
The next slide is just a 3D to give a more visual representation. However, we did not, there are no requirements addressed on this elevation. It has been in our previous packet. Were there any questions from any commissioners regarding this? If no, we can go ahead, Miranda, to the next slide. Thank you. This is our topographic map, which we were required to provide. It has been in the packet previously, so I won't spend a great deal of time on this. But it does complete the requirement for Section 1655-1B, the proposed topographic character of the land at a contour interval of two feet. If the slope is less than 10%, spot elevations may be required, the land is too flat for contours, and five feet if the slope is greater than 10%. Were there any questions about the topo map? This was engineered by Flatiron Center. If no questions, we will go ahead. The next, as we mentioned previously, this was an ad hoc request from Chair Cornell and the commissioners. It is not a requirement to provide a drainage plan at this point in the PUD process. But we wanted to go ahead and clarify and address any concerns. So last meeting, we have hired a civil engineer, the Rocky Ridge Civil Engineering Firm. They did a report. Because of time and the length of the report, we included just this memo, which we weren't going to spend a lot of time on. There is a full report with 31 pages that has charts and graphs and so forth that outlines how they arrived at this. But to say that this is required at the building phase, and there will be a stamped engineered drawing provided at that time. Were there any questions regarding the drainage memo from the commissioners?
Miranda, I just want to reiterate that point, that the applicant added this at a request of the Planning Commission, but it is not a requirement for this PUD. So it should not be considered in your final decision tonight. They just, they added it as kind of that above and beyond piece.
Staff, I just want to raise the question. I, I don't know how the exact page in front of me, but the PUD includes anything in the subdivision regulations. Does not the subdivision regulations ask for a drainage plan? Anyhow, I will accept this, but that's something that we could discuss later on. But this has been, this is a very good drawing, very good proposal. And whether, the point of whether we should have asked for it or not asked for it, it's certainly something that needs to be part of the project. So I think it's actually processed and something that would have to come up later on. So this is a document that was certainly, for me, very, very worthwhile. So thank you. And we won't get hung up on whether we should have asked it for it or not asked for it. It's a very, very productive document, so thank you.
Sure. Chair Cornell, there's a couple of mentions in Section 16-88 in the density increase requirements. So those are that it must be run as a planned unit development. The site has to be at least 8,000 square feet. They need 25% of the project site to be landscaped, open split, open space, which excludes parking. And then the fourth condition is the town may require project site planning, including landscaping and building design by certified professionals. The fifth is, the applicant is paid additional costs incurred by the town for extraordinary review of the application, including service of outside contractors. And so we would, again, gather escrow at the point of building phase to have the engineering plan reviewed and things like that. So that may be what you were thinking of in terms of the drainage.
This is Karen, but this is Karen Blakemore. I have a question on the current page. Is this the right time to ask that question? Or will the applicant be talking about this page first?
Are you talking about the plan that's up right now?
Yes.
Um, we were just going to mention that this is a preliminary plan. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, we had to, you know, again, it was done with a review, but this is not the final. The final would be, you know, final plan at the building phase, as Cynthia mentioned. This is one possibility. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know what that answered. What was your question, Karen?
Oh, this is Karen Blakemore. So my question is about the concrete trickle pan that runs along the east side and the dry stack retaining wall. Will those reduce the turn radius for cars that are parking in the garages or along the east side of the property?
I would think that would all be addressed at the building stage. I mean, you know, we have to have the stamped completed plans, this plan as well. So it's all going to have to be finalized.
This is Dennis. I talked to the MDA when he proposed this, and that trickle channel would be part of the driveway. Your little drive over, they say they do it all the time. And then the dry stack retaining wall is like a one-block-high containing wall. It's not really nothing that big. It's about eight-inch, eight-inch block or six-inch block.
Okay. And then, the other question I have is more for town staff. And it's not particularly, it's just related to this project. But I'm wondering if there would be enough water flowing that might require a culvert under 4th Street to drain from that DP1 into the North Beaver Creek?
That would really be a question for our utilities team who are on the call. So I'm not sure if any of us want to make a guess. Cynthia might, but.
Sure. I can add something to that, Karen. Thanks for the question. So a lot of times, the engineering will note if there is a need for a culvert. And they'll note, are there other culverts in the area? And then public works, some has knowledge on the ground of culverts. So if we have any information to add on, if culvert's, you know, ineffective or what have you, but that would, that would be at the engineering review of their drainage plan and any other associated engineering at the building phase.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have any other questions before we move on? So I do, Roger Cornell, I have one more question about that curve. The, which Karen was referring to, which direction is the water, is the water flowing north on that entire curve?
The curve tracks up the trickle channel. It's like the one side of the trickle channel, and it flows north, that's right. They got it going north.
According to this plan, the grading would address that, and it would grade it out if that plan is accomplished. And again, this is a preliminary plan. This is one option when the, when Little Bear, the existing building is deconstructed and the lot is cleared, there may be other options.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then that's where we should work with. I, that's what I question, because it's actually going uphill. I question how all the water will go up north. But overall, this is a good plan. We're right on point of what we want to be. So I have a question, maybe as staff, is when this is all, when we completed after our work tonight, and we would go to the plant, to the Board of Trustees, would this actually plan be reviewed by JVC, by our engineers? Or who's going to verify some of those questions? Because main question I see is that trickle pan moving the water north uphill, and then we have the two culverts in the pipe there, basically in 4th Street in the north part of the property. And, you know, where does that water go? So I, all the other explanations to me are very, very complete, but I just, I just don't see how that trickle plate, help me out with the words, whatever it is, the, how does it move the water to the north? And it actually just shows it going to the edge of the house to the north. And so how do we move the water from all, from that parking area lot all the way to the catch spaces there on 4th Street? So that's the question I had. And the bigger part would be then, maybe the engineer would actually be at a better explanation at the Board of Trustees and/or that JVC would review this with comments. So between the applicant and staff, maybe we can answer that question.
We have collected escrow, and that is for engineering legal planning. So we would be able to, to have it reviewed, although the applicant is showing, or is, they're saying this is preliminary, and this may be one option. So I don't know if they're interested in having this reviewed by our engineering firm in order to determine the viability of the preliminary proposed plan. Or if they have something we could review, we could certainly do that before the trustees. I believe JVA, who does our on-call engineering, would be able to do that. They are pretty busy with this building season, like everybody. But I would, I would believe that that's feasible to do.
Well, it's not feasible, Karen Cornell, it is certainly not required at this point. Those things would all happen once, if it were to be approved, when they go through the permitting process, as they go through the building process. All of that will be happening with our town engineer, with SafeBilt, that's a part of the process. So as Cynthia is letting you know, things could change. You know, they're giving you really a lot more information than is necessarily required at this point. Things could still change, and that's a part of the process that happens afterwards. You still have to have everything signed off, you know, by our engineer, by SafeBilt.
I can understand that, so we might make that just part of recommendations, that the drainage plan be approved. And if you would, I'll take one moment. This is a PUD development hearing, correct? Planning and Development.
This is a PUD? Yes.
All right. So 16-153 says coordination with subdivision regulations is, in this article, that the subdivision review under subdivision regulations be carried out simultaneously with the review of a planned unit development. And very clearly in our subdivision, it says that, that there will be a drainage and storm drains and drainage review. So I think, I know that we looked at the 16-88 as density increase, but clearly, under the planned unit development, I feel, just so you know how I got to this point in this discussion, that under planned unit development, drainage is very clearly part of the review. But I am totally satisfied with, at the next step, at the next phase, that a, we'll just make that recommendation, that would be a total drainage review at the final, whether it's at the Board of Trustees or at the building phase, that is fine. Just the water and sewer will be at the building permit stage. And as we heard last month, the fire has no issues too. So they are willing, or would, all those questions be answered at the building permit phase? I just wanted to say that, from what I read and researched, that certainly the idea for us having the discussion of drains right now is actually part of the subdivision PUD process. So, but I think we have answered that question, we can move on very, very quickly.
I have a question for you, Chair Cornell. The, what you're mentioning here, it says, Section 16-153, coordination with subdivision regulations. If everyone can hear me, someone's TV is still playing in the background, and it's pretty loud. It says, it is the intent of this article that subdivision review under the subdivision regulations be carried out simultaneously with the review of planned unit development under this article. I'm not an attorney, but the way that I would read that is if we were doing a subdivision with, in coordination with the planned unit review, then that would be relevant. But I could be wrong about that. That's how I would read that code section there, that is, the intent of this article, that subdivision review under the subdivision regulations be carried out simultaneously. So that is, for example, like what happened with Caribou Ridge, that you'd be coordinating the subdivision, a brand-new subdivision, and making sure that those aspects are coordinating with a planned unit development that's being asked for? These applicants are just going for a planned unit development? They're not doing any subdividing of the lot?
Okay, but that, so these are good conversations, but I think that Karen certainly answered a question that, that we will move forward, that we do have the drains plan. And I think it's very positive that we have it now, as I said. So I think the, the question and the issues have actually been satisfied. And unless any of the other commissioners have issues, I think we can move on to make this project go forward and recommend it to the Board of Trustees. So let's go to the next slide.
Chair Cornell, it's now going to be public comment because this is their final slide here. And unless you have other questions for the applicants, you could move into public comment.
All right, we will open, we've already opened the public hearing, but open the public hearing for.
Excuse me, excuse me, I was trying to get off mute. Miranda, we did have a this last slide was our in conclusion slide.
Thank you for the reminder. Yes, never mind. Go ahead.
Thank you. We did just want to do a quick wrap up. To conclude this process at the close of the last meeting, Chair Cornell asked us to reach out to our neighbors. We want to point out that we purchased this property February eleventh. In March, we did consider reaching out to the people within the three hundred foot radius. However, with COVID and the meeting got canceled and so forth, we did not physically reach out. We just thought that was create more harm than good. But since our last meeting, we have reached out to Andrew Bliss, who had concerns with the height and a few other things. Scott Paybridge also is concerned with the height. We had a conversation with both of those gentlemen, and I want to say very cordial. They're both very polite. I think we remain on different sides of of how we view the project. But we all said it was not personal and nothing adversarial. Just everyone sharing their viewpoint. There was a public comment from the owner of the brewery next door, which we did reply to. That comment came in late yesterday from him. We got our reply out today. And I'm not, and I believe it was sent on to to him as well. So we did not have a conversation with Chris, but we have exchanged emails. And settled, you know, that we've hired a drainage engineer and it is going to be cleaner for both us as in as property owners and more positive if we address our drainage issues separately. And hence, we have hired the drainage engineer. And we have presented tonight the drainage memo and a preliminary, preliminary plan. So we will both be dealing with our own separate drainage, whatever they are on our on our properties. We've demonstrated a willingness to meet with the neighbors and hear their feelings. We've integrated their feedback as appropriate, specifically with regard to height. I want to remind the commissioners that we've modified our plans now twice. From the May presentation, we first presented a gable roof for this project that had a thirty four foot height. Then in the July presentation, we modified the roof. It went to a hip roof and it was lowered to thirty feet. Now, in this presentation, we have once again changed the pitch. And we are down to a five twelve pitch from our last pitch presented in July, which has lowered the hip roof down to twenty eight point four feet. So we are well within within the requirements and within the building code of the city. So we respect everyone's right to their opinion and point of view, you know, the community, our neighbors, etc. At the same time, we respect our own property rights, our property development rights. We've been considered a community by not maxing out the density, the lot usage, the open space, nor the height. And while we acknowledge our proposed plan will not please everyone, it is well thought out and reasonable. It complies with all PUD requirements and all municipal codes. It was noted in the planning commissions envision twenty thirty documents that establishing additional housing opportunities has been one of the accomplishments of the planning commission over the last decade. And we hope with our little bear project to add to that long list of accomplishments. So in conclusion, thank you for allowing us to present tonight and for your inspiration of our project. And we do hope to be able to.
Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Thank you very much. At this time, is anybody from the public here wants to speak? You'll have three minutes to speak. When you speak, please tell your name and your address and who's speaking. So if we have anybody online.
This is Scott Pappitch, I'd be willing.
Scott, give me a minute. I'm going to set this timer and it's going to go beep beep at you after three minutes.
Oh, Cynthia.
So let me know when you're ready. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okey doke.
Okay, this is Scott Pappitch at four seventy West Third Street. And I'd just like to say, you know, we have heard numerous statements on this project about investing in the community. But we need to acknowledge that the citizens who are right now most invested in the community are the citizens who not only own property here, the citizens who also live here every day. And as legitimate existing investors in this neighborhood, we need to take some responsibility for helping to guide this new development, not only to meet regulations, but also, and this is just as important, to fit with the character of the existing existing neighborhood. So more specifically, yes, I am talking about the height. And I don't think there's any reason why this structure needs to be the most visually prominent structure in this neighborhood. So tall residences do exist across the peak to peak. They do not impose themselves visually on the area. They sit well below the skyline. And all the residences on this side of the peak to peak, at least in the immediate area, they all blend in together pretty nicely. And essentially none that I can tell exceeds twenty feet at height. My own two story home is about fifteen feet tall. Once this building is put up, it's permanent. And with all with all due respect to the owners, and I respect your right to develop a project and make a profit, you will not be living here in this neighborhood full time. And we who do live here right now would very much appreciate if this structure or these two structures did not impose themselves so visually upon the scenic features of the surrounding areas, specifically on the visual skyline. And in using those words, the scenic features of the surrounding area, I am quoting directly from the Agenda Information Memorandum on this project as page five point E three. My question is, isn't there a way for this development to be yet just a little bit less tall? Thank you, commissioners, for hearing my comments. Any questions?
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this subject?
Yeah, I would. My name is Jeff Lynch. I live at twenty three Forest Road. You know, just to chime in and just echo even, you know, I just had a couple bullets that I would hit real quick. But to echo Scott's point, you know, I've lived in this mountain community for twenty one years. I live less than a half a mile from from the space that we're talking about, and I've been there for over nine years. I work from home in a very professional job. So I mean, I'm here nonstop. I just actually was listening to you guys while I had my son at the skate park. And, you know, it's all about fit and this is permanent to Scott's point, right? And we haven't seen anything like this in this town, except for the affordable housing, which went in, which addresses, you know, the housing potential issue, which is great, you know, but but it's also where it's located, all the issues brought up with parking. You know, this is here for personal profit. It's not into maximizing the potential investment of a, you know, a school that was there for forever and whatnot. There's no true benefit and code is there for a reason. And at the same token, it's only four units. So like the whole pitch on like, what does it really solve? I can't really wrap my brain around what four places would really do in most cases. And when you think about people that move, you know, move here and contribute to the community that's vibrant and always growing and evolving, nobody wants to be the person that moved into those buildings. They're just going to be marked as those people, you know? And this is, it's a beginning, you know, like, when does it stop? Because in my opinion, and probably many other residents, it really shouldn't begin. You know, it's just big. It's a giant sore. It's going to be there for a long time. And, you know, this is Western Boulder County. It's not Boulder West. And I would just hate to see a transformation. So I appreciate the opportunity. I've never been to one of these before, so I'm kind of learning throughout the process, but thank you to the commission for letting me speak.
Is there anybody else want to speak at this time?
Hey, good night. Good evening. This is Andrew Bliss. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. My name is Andrew Bliss. I live at four five one West Third Street. I'm a new resident to Netherlands. First want to thank staff. I'm constantly impressed with the caliber of staff we have in town. I want to thank the planning commission and for your thoughts tonight. It's obvious that you care a lot about these projects. And and I don't know much about planning, but I know enough to know that planning commission members typically have hard jobs that don't get enough credit. So thank you. I want to thank Ellen, the developer. She reached out to me on Sunday and like she said, we did have a very cordial conversation. So I want to thank her for that. And I want to thank our neighbors, Scott and others, who, you know, we have, we are new residents here, but the neighbors have been absolutely fantastic here, both property owners and renters. We chose our to raise our family here. We have two young boys. One reason is the character of the town and its architecture. It's a little weird. It's a little quirky and that makes me feel at home. I was not at home in the suburbs in the front range with their cookie cutter homes, condos and apartment buildings. I'm trying to be reasonable reasonable in my opinions about this project, but obviously I'm biased. I'm not fully comfortable making these comments as a new resident. And I'm not fully opposed to development at the site. I just don't want to sell us to sell ourselves short as a town. And I want to make sure I do what I can to do what's best for my neighborhood. I want to make a couple of quick points. Cynthia, feel free to cut me off when I run out of time. Big picture points that probably aren't very productive, maybe some substantive points that might be helpful. And then a few points on the public input process. Big picture, what does this town want to be? You know, with proximity to Boulder, Eldora and the great outdoors, it's easily to become a town like Breckenridge and Vale. I think it's clear that this town does not want to be like Breckenridge and Vale, and that's why we moved here. But this this is going to be brand new, high end condos at the northern gateway of our city. It's it is going to change the appearance of our town. And and this is not affordable housing. I understand that there may be a need for housing of all types here, but these are going to be market rate condos at two thousand to twenty five hundred dollars a month. That's a lot of money. Maybe this might be a little bit more substantial, but it sounds like you, your decisions are based on, does this fit in with the neighborhood? Does this fit in with the comp plan? I my I don't, I don't, it doesn't look like this is an option, but I hate to see the historic structure being down. I was excited to read in the memo that, you know, these developers have experience with historical architecture. And it seemed like the the open space requirements were limiting there. It turns out that's not really what was limiting. It's just going to cost too much money. And it's not going to allow the type of housing that they want. But but it's sad to see a historic structure gone forever. And I really wish the town flexibility like it did on the affordable housing project to keep that historic structure. And 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 like Scott has said, you know, if we can't keep the historic structure, maybe, you know, it would be great if we could keep these to one story units like the other multifamily units in the in the in the neighborhood. And I'll just wrap up with a few comments on public input. I really appreciate the planning commission encouraging the developer to reach out. We did have a conversation, but it was too late for public input. All the plans were finished. It was just a defense of the project and the conversation about my concerns. I'm not sure if this was enough time, but I do understand that the application requires notification of property owners within three hundred feet of the project. I believe I live within three hundred feet of the project and I did not receive notice as part of this application for whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the public?
Yes, this is Mandy Pappitch.
Go ahead.
Sure. I also did not receive notice until much later in the game as well to echo Andrew's concern. I also wanted to bring up the agenda memo, page five, section E three. It states town shall town shall determine appropriate uses based on the preservation of the natural scenic features of surrounding areas. I just want to point out that every neighbor, including myself, over out of this building will no longer see the mountains. Seems like that would be a violation of that consideration there as and there's only one owner that will then be able to see the mountains and that would be the owners of this new property. And they don't even live there, which is a major concern of mine. The owners say that, you know, they care so deeply about the Netherlands community. But at what expense of making all the neighbors on the east side pretty unhappy about this too tall of a building that's going to block all of our views here and also not match the character of the neighborhood? Just because this is legal doesn't really make it right, I don't think, with the community, if they care so much about the community. The third point I want to make here is definitely concerning the the character of the neighborhood here. As you know, we are historic mining district of the community. Typically, residences are around nine hundred square feet with logged or wood siding. The Netherlands Design Standards documents say online, new residents, new residences should respect, sketch and mimic the character of all neighboring and adjacent historic historic dwellings, by the way. New residences should blend in, not overpower. This building is totally overpowering our neighborhood looking west. Be small in size and simple, typically one to one and a half stories. Building with an oversized garage and two stories is in complete violation of these standards. It's not historic. It doesn't blend in with any of our homes. We have a hundred year old homes. And even Wendy Williams of Hartmut's are one story and totally character of Netherlands across the street from my house. We don't want to look like Brimfield, okay? And I know that Ellen mentioned that this is where her idea of this project started and then it wound up in Netherlands, which is really unfortunate. I think we need to consider building in a form that's similar to the adjacent homes that are very, very historic in this neighborhood. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody from the public? Anybody else here that wants to speak? One.
Hello?
Yes, who's this?
Hi, hi, this is Chris Marcio. I'm the owner of Knotted Root Brewing Company located at two fifty North Caribou Street. We are the most immediate neighbor to this development project as well as the most impacted based on the current plan set forth. So I would like to speak and also say how thankful I am to see additional thought and design. You know, I can tell that Dennis and Ellen, you know, are passionate about this project. And I appreciate that as a neighbor and someone who's, you know, in this community. Having said all that, I do have some concerns still with the drainage. Though that has largely been addressed, I did meet with Dennis personally on August or, yeah, August thirteenth. I reached out to him. I made the initial contact for this meeting and we met and just kind of discussed and he walked me through some things. And I left that particular meeting with the impression that we would be working together to tie into our our culvert and we would come to an agreement to somehow make that copacetic. With these new plans, I got to say, I don't quite understand them. So I would personally like to know a little bit more detail on how they work. And for the sake of time, I'm going to keep going. There is a fence that would be backing on our west side of the property. There's no details in terms of the exact placement of this fence. The survey and the zoning is very strange. It's kind of on an angle and kind of juts across unnatural lines in terms of visual. So I'd like to know the height, the plans on that. Moving forward, I am just curious about snow removal in terms of the small driveway and how they plan to move snow and where they would plan to push it and stuff like that. I know we have a lot of snow issues and stuff that we deal with, but we also have a lot more open space. The knotted root building is the tallest building on this side of town. We are twenty feet. And this reduced height, which I do understand is reduced and they don't have to do that, which I appreciate that. You know, it would be close to ten feet higher than our building, which is still considerable. And essentially would block the view from the entire side, not just us, but as all the other neighbors are, you know, displaying from everyone. It seems as if not one immediate neighbor supports this project. from everyone. It seems as if not one immediate neighbor supports this project as it exists. Um, you know, we do support housing. We do support the notion of bringing more attractive housing to this neighborhood and to Netherlands. But, um, I mean, as it stands, if your whole neighborhood does not agree with something, that should say something. Um, I think Dennis and Ellen are very kind people and I would love to continue to work with them. I do have some, you know, questions about the final plans set forth. I'm happy to see them with more detail. Um, but, um, it is different than when I left the last in-person meeting that we had in terms of regarding drainage and things like that. And I just want to reiterate the question that everyone has brought forth. Um, does this fit with the neighborhood and is there a way for us to work together so we can both, we can all be happy with the new development project and they can have a profitable, um, comfy, attractive, you know, housing unit that really works with the town and community of Netherlands? Thank you for your comment and, um, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chris. Is there anybody else wants to speak at this time? If not, then I will close the public hearing on this process. And, uh, at this time, Dennis and Ellen, you should take some time. Do you have any responses to the questions? I know the one, one big one was with Chris about the fence along that east property line. This would be your opportunity to respond to the public comment.
Yes. Um, this is Ellen Boyen. Um, so I was trying to make notes. There were several people who spoke and I would do my, my best to address the various comments that were made. Um, we, I'll start with Chris. Regarding the fence, um, the fence will be determined by code, uh, that's down the road. And so we don't, we haven't looked at the building codes, but we're required to comply with the building code. We'll comply with that. Um, we envision a fence going around the perimeter of the property as we mentioned earlier during the slides, um, for, for safety. I, I realize that it's nice to have an open space now, but, uh, for a prospective tenant, that's, that's, uh, not really tenable, especially if there are pets and children. Um, so logically there would be a fence, um, and it would, it would follow the property line. Um, there were several comments. Again, they all seem to be centered on the height. I just want to state, we live in the community too. Um, we've owned since 2008 in Netherlands. Uh, Dennis has been coming up here elk hunting since the eighties. So, he's very familiar with the town. We bought in the town because of that, uh, attachment to the area for him and, um, his connection to Netherlands.
But besides elk hunting, this is Dennis again, uh, Eldora was our favorite backyard ski area and we skied and we had ski passes to Eldora when the Erdl family owned it and there was night skiing and midnight, uh, New Year's Eve midnight skiing. Uh, if the, Netherlands means a lot to me. Ellen and I want to stay here and, and we're, our retirement is here. And so we, we consider Netherlands future with the project. So, just want to let people know that we're not just out of tanners.
I guess, um, you know, they, they talk about the quote unquote neighborhood and I guess that everybody's going to have their own personal definition. I mean, what is the immediate area? What is the neighborhood? What is Netherlands community? It's not just Third Street and it's not just, you know, this little block from Fourth to Cariboo to Third. Uh, it's across the highway where there are, uh, several two-story homes and also multifamily. Uh, they're currently up for sale, I believe, or under contract. Um, so we believe contrary to what's been expressed, we do believe that it is compatible with the architecture and the structure types that are in the immediate area. Um, regarding why we didn't keep Little Bear, um, the existing building, uh, it was because we could not meet the setbacks. We, the position of existing building on the lot is odd and it takes up a huge footprint. So, for us to put a triplex, we were not meeting the setbacks. We couldn't squish it into the remaining space with that odd notch from C-dots right of way. We attempted to buy it. We could not do it. Uh, we looked at several options. We, we've been through a lot of options and that ultimately was not possible for us. Um, I, I, I think this is all that I, uh, oh, one other thing I will mention, uh, because someone brought up price, I believe Andrew, we, we've done a lot of research and if anyone cares to go on Tunston Village, they are affordable housing. They only have two three-bedroom units. Ours are bigger. We do not, there are currently much more two-bedroom, one-bath for rent than there are three. There are, there are no three units, or excuse me, three-bedroom units now currently out for rent. And I believe there's just two one-bedroom, one-bath. Um, but on the Tunston Village site, they list their affordable housing price for their three-bedroom units as almost 1,500. I believe it's 1,475 to 75, which they say is 1,100 less than, uh, what the, what the norm would be. So, I just want to say our, our pricing is in the ballpark. We've spoken to the community housing, uh, members and advocates in, in Netherlands and, um, also confirm that. Um, I believe that's, that's all from my scribbled notes that I can read. Um, and so that concludes our, our response to the public question.
Thank you very much, Dennis and Ellen. I will close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the planning commission to, can we go around and have comments with the, uh, planning commission? Um, I guess let me first ask Steph, do you have anything to follow up on?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to mention that Mandy Pappich had noted, uh, standards and this is the Netherlands design standards that she's speaking of. Um, and they are mandatory standards and voluntary guidelines for the central business district and historic residential neighborhoods. It notes they provide voluntary guidelines for compatible new residential design and for preserving historic homes. So, um, with respect to the neighborhood commercial district, it's not a requirement, um, but obviously considering character and I thought that was a important point that she made, but I wanted to make a note that they are required for the CBD district. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's just throw a quick round for any comments. I'll, I'll just call out the names and we can just go around then. Um, I've always, because I missed you a couple of times. Jim, how about you start? Jim Reese?
Okay, thank you. So, Dennis and Ellen, I want to thank you for, uh, bringing this project to Netherlands. I know there's a lot of opposition to it, but we desperately need these three-bedroom units and I think they're going to be a great addition if you can actually get through the whole process. I especially like that you tried to save what you could, uh, from the Little Bear, uh, uh, history there by incorporating some of the logs into the, the front of your building. And, uh, thank you so much for trying your best to address, uh, the questions and concerns of planning, planning commission and, uh, providing a detailed, uh, even though it's preliminary drainage plan, I could see that by the time you get to the BOT, uh, sign-off phase of that and through the permits and everything, you're going to have a very detailed plan. And, uh, I, I just hope that at some point, uh, down the line, uh, you and the neighbors can, can see that it, it looks like something that's going to be a, a good addition to the neighborhood. Uh, but, you know, can't always make everybody happy. But, uh, I, I personally think that, uh, you've done a good job of, of trying to address things even though, uh, they weren't required at this stage. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, former mayor Chris Paray, are you there?
Yes.
Any comments?
I just have to say that we should probably be listening to the neighbors and neighborhood because, uh, they're the ones who have to look at and we do too as we drive by. So, just have to be considerate of them that, you know, maybe they don't go for a four-bedroom unit. Maybe they go for three, three or maybe two. So, that becomes lower and it becomes more aesthetically pleasing to their neighbors.
All right, Chris. Um, Karen Blakemore, are you there? Any comments?
Yes, I'm here. Um, so I did hear what the neighbors were saying about blocking the western view, although I've not personally, um, taken a look at that. Uh, however, the neighborhood commercial allows 35-foot-high buildings. And so I believe that any of the current residents there could pop up their houses to a maximum of 35 feet. Um, so I do appreciate that Dennis and Ellen, um, uh, reduced the height and also the bulk of the roof. Um, I think that will help with the, uh, uh, with the feel of the, um, size and, and views. Um, I also appreciate that they addressed all the commissioner's comments, even though they weren't requirements during this stage and that they reached out to neighbors. Um, so it complies with the PUD requirements. Um, oh, and I compared, uh, this building, these buildings to the duplex that, uh, Jeff Ruth has built on the east side of town. And relatively they're, um, about the same style, size, bulk and cost. Um, so they're, they're two-bedroom, two-bath, but, um, they're less expensive and a little bit smaller. Um, so, uh, his, 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 uh, townhouse structure that he has there right now is about 25, 28 feet high. Um, so, and it, to me, it doesn't look too imposing. It is in a different location, but, um, that gave me a, a better, um, appreciation for the, the height. Um, and, uh, his building has eight-foot-high ceilings, um, in the two levels too. So, um, that is all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, Billy Giblin, are you there?
Yes, thanks. Commissioner, thanks Roger. Um, so yeah, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, meaning our questions and, uh, um, giving us more information. Um, and, and I've looked at that lot. I've driven by and I've driven around and kind of envisioned it at 30 feet and even taken off, you know, 1.6 feet and visioning it there at that height. Um, I, yeah, and I've kind of been really deliberating this back and forth, but I do really have a hard time. Um, or I do really hear, hear the public comments, um, and the neighbors and it's, I think it's all about the neighbors. Well, I think it's very important that any project take strong consideration of the people living around and the neighbors and the character that is kind of immediate to it. So, um, uh, as for details about height, you know, um, it could be shorter, it could be shorter ceilings. You could go with a flat roof. You could make it a usable, uh, deck roof, deck and even, even. But, um, I just think there's, there's more to it than just height, but I think height, height is a big one, it seems, in drainage, with height being the big issue with your neighbors. Um, and, and just character of the building versus character of the neighborhood. That's all I really have to say. As much, as much as we need the housing, that, that's all I really have to say.
Okay. Th- thank you, Billy. Um, I'll move next to, uh, Stephanie Harry. It's good to hear from you.
Hey, how's it going? Um, yeah, so, uh, I, um, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I think, this is, I think this is a really tough discussion, right? I think we're really trying to balance, um, the, not only the, the character of the community we live in today, but trying to understand where we want our community to go in the future. And that's why it's called the planning commission. Um, but I think that, uh, much like Billy and Chris, you know, um, consideration of the impact to the, the immediate neighbors, um, and the community comment that we've heard here today, uh, is something that I'm weighing pretty, I, I'm, I guess I'm still trying to figure out, you know, um, wa- weighing that and understanding where the, you know, the alignment that we're looking for towards, you know, and the PUD or the language that we are actually supposed to looking at as the planning commission. Um, you know, so does the commission feel the proposal is generally compatible with the surrounding land uses? And I think that we have a, a question on the table of whether that's landing for surrounding land use is those neighbors within 300 feet who are actually, you know, invited to be notified early and engaged? Or is the surrounding land use the broader Netherlands, you know, town or community? Um, and I think that, uh, that's, because clearly, and I agree with Karen, there are other buildings within town certainly that are similar to in size and shape or whatnot of this, um, proposed development. And is that something that we should really be considering here? Is that what surrounding land use, um, really means? Or is it the neighbors who are most directly, uh, impacted? I live in Big Springs. This, this type of, you know, size and whatnot would probably go relatively unnoticed. Some people are building houses up here that are that size on a pretty routine basis. And so, but it's different than building something in town. And, um, and so I think that that's something that trying to figure out where that line is, um, because that is, as a planning commission, that's the guidance that we are given in terms of what we should and shouldn't consider, um, is the compatibility with that surrounding land use. You know, I think that's, uh, given the comments we've heard from the immediate neighbors, um, it seems like there are still challenges there. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. That brings us to Steve Williams, your comment.
I don't, um, have a whole lot to say. I, uh, first of all, appreciate, uh, Dennis and Ellen for going out of your way to provide a lot more background information, address the concerns of the planning commission. Um, I just want to say that, um, if this passes onto the board of trustees this evening, I would still encourage you to, uh, continue dialogue with the neighbors before, um, the project becomes final and see if you can reach some sort of, of, I, I'm a little dismayed that part of the, um, dialogue with the neighbors hasn't really occurred, but obviously during these trying times of COVID, that's very difficult. But I would still encourage you to go ahead and continue that dialogue to see. It sounds like, um, it's only down to a couple of issues that probably need to be ironed out. Um, but, um, but I guess when you look at the code and walking through the various steps of the PUD process, maybe Roger will say a little bit more about that. Um, it seems like, uh, we've sort of met the criteria that was before us as part of the decision process. So, anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. I'll hand it over to Roger.
Okay, my-
Colonel?
Yes, sir.
This is Jim Reese. I did want to point out, uh, that I, I, I think it was overlooked that there was one neighbor who wrote an email in support of this project. Uh, so not universally every single neighbor, uh, was against it.
Thank you, Jim. A good point. Yes, we were sent that email. So, uh, my comments are, um, I'm just adding in front of the 16158. Um, first of all, I do want to thank- First of all, I do want to thank the applicants for, I actually looked at my packet this morning, and we have a meeting scheduled for April for a public hearing. So this has actually been quite a long process, so thank you very much for your patience. I think it's, again, has been very productive, and we've actually done a very thorough review with a lot of questions. So, 16-158. The approval, the-
Chairman, Chairman Cornell, we're doing, ask Linda Glasser?
Yeah, Linda's still on. Linda's, you didn't ask for her comments?
Linda Blackmore?
Linda Glasser.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Sorry. Yes, Linda Glasser. Appreciate that, thank you. Of all people to forget. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I'm still here. And I concur with all the comments that are made. I appreciate what Ellen and Dennis have done as far as giving us all the information, helping with the changes, following the codes, but I also have a strong feeling, listening to the neighbors, because they are living there and they have to deal with this every day. So it's a real tough situation. If it does go forward, I, like the rest of the board, feel working with the neighbors a little more directly is very important, and I think maybe things can be resolved a little bit better. At this point, it's a toss-up. I think those are my comments.
Thank you, Linda, and I apologize for missing you. I, I counted actually six commissioners, and then I, we had a new commissioner a few years ago.
That's okay, that's all right.
Boy, that's a good interference right now. So this is Roger, my comments are 16-158, and I know that each bullet, that certainly could be in a higher hearing and a discussion, the general application is compatible with adjacent land uses. It's, it's, it's neighborhood commercial, next door is a commercial project, all around it are multifamily dwellings, so it truly is part of that neighborhood. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Well, we've all heard comprehensive plans, and the one thing about comprehensive plan, pull bullets out, you know, for a project, against a project, the comprehensive plan really is a broad painting of a lot of things, and it's so, I, I would say the overall direction that this town has taken for over 10 years and all the comprehensive plans and all the projects that the Board of Trustees has taken is to try to develop more core, downtown core area housing. I think that's very clearly has been the path that we've been on for 10 years. We have the capacity, the sewer, water, and police, and the number of dwelling units is within the underlying zoning district, which it is. So I think clearly, other than basically the neighbors, the neighborhood challenging the height, which is 35 feet, and which we've actually worked to reduce it at least seven feet to 28, I think it's actually been a process. So with that, I would like to ask, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the project that 575 Peak-to-Peak Highway? Because it meets the density requirements of 1688, and it meets all the requirements and criteria for 16-158. Of the PUD. And the-
It's a Jim Reed's move.
Just, okay. Cynthia, did you get that motion? First of all, let me ask, is there a second? Steve?
I'll second.
Cynthia, do you have the motion?
Sorry, I didn't unmute. Yes, I do.
Would you like, why don't you read that back before we call for a vote?
Okay. So we have the final motion to approve made by Commissioner Reese, seconded by Vice Chair Williams, as it meets the requirements of Section 16-158 and meets the requirements of Section 16-88 density increase. Was that correct for you? Chair Cornell?
Yes, and it's a recommendation for the Board of Trustees, which I assume we all know that.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I hate that. I guess I would ask, is there any further discussion from the commissioners? Anybody have a point?
Yeah, this is Billy Giblin. I just wanted to say, we do need more housing, but I do not personally think we need more expensive housing, and that is part of the problem with housing up here is caught.
Okay, so there's no further discussion, we have a motion, a second, I'll call for a vote. Cynthia, would you state the role?
Yes. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Blakemore? Yes. Chair Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
No.
Commissioner Glasser? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Harry?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry?
No.
Commissioner-
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees has passed.
Thank you very much. It's been quite a process, so everybody, thank you.
Chair Cor, hey, can we take a break?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I was, I wanted to take a break, too. So a five-minute break at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. Hi, is it ready? No, I need that sign today. Stephanie, are you ready? No, no rush, Charles. You promised to be ready, I'm going to be there in an hour. I remember my first day at home at preschool. I wore a brown dress with owls on it, came with a matching backpack. My head always shocked with different targets. Wanted to feel like a normal kid for one day. And I gotta say. You're a good boy now. You learn all kinds of new things. Uh, you can build an incursion.
I can walk myself.
Uh, no.
There's only two blocks.
Right to school and then right home, okay?
Okay.
I'm here! Are there any guns in that house?
I have a water gun.
Real guns, Lucas. All the knives safely out of reach? No, there's knives in all of these floors, oh my God!
Do you repeat in the house?
That's your injury, chocolate needle. Morning.
This is-
What?
DCFAS is coming to make sure that we can keep-
It's obvious that I will be able to, their cleaning supplies down here rarely available for a break to keep the depth of internal bleeding and violence egress. I worry you need to survive. How come I'm doing enough caps? I don't think you're supposed to be in that. I think Lucas is sleeping, he's an owl, right? What? Turning into a room with a DCFAS home, starting today.
When is peeking my room? Is it in the back?
We'll talk about it in there, Sarah.
We are hearing somebody's TV again, nice and loud. Please, please mute.
I think that people don't realize-
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the box of the room gets picked up in the air purifier.
Yeah, the, the microphones appear to be better than our, our normal meeting microphones, they're picking up random ambient noise.
That's true.
Cynthia, are you there? Do you have a minute to speak to me? This is Roger.
Sure, I sure do. I've taken my break.
So my question is then, for the McMullen Trust, the next, the next agenda item, I went back and read the minutes and, you know, and I remember at the end, we made a motion that is a subdivision hotline, did we approve anything last, last meeting, or what specifically to the motion tonight to do both the subdivision and the lotline?
Good question. Good question. So the motion last time was for a minor subdivision replat to cleave off that western tail from 34 Forest to add to 3 East 5th Street. And then tonight's application, and that application still would need to go to the Board of Trustees. We decided to send the whole package to the Board of Trustees. We were at our limit for the Planning Commission for the number of reviews that are, that you're allowed to review in a, in a meeting, and we already had two other applicants. So we split up this applicant's review, and we did the minor subdivision replat piece first. This application would concern the rezone for the, the western tail, that triangle, to go down to 3 East 5th Street, along with dissolving that lotline. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, okay. So we, last time we, what did we approve last? Okay, so we're just trying to, yeah, we did the rezoning.
No, this is the rezoning tonight with a lotline dissolution, and the previous part was severing off that chunk, that minor subdivision.
Okay, we just severed, we just took the tail, got it.
And then the condition for that minor subdivision replat was that the applicant come back for this rezone, because otherwise, that would be a parcel kind of hanging out that would need to be rezoned. So this would be for the rezone and dissolving the lotline between them. And then the, and, and that is the motion that you guys would be making, is this co-application for rezoning and lotline dissolution. All three of the applications would then go before the Board of Trustees for consideration as one, but they would consider them all, you know, individually, those considerations before them.
So I, I got it. So it's basically dissolve the east-west line on that north portion and the lotline, and actually then just approve the new 3E, 3 East 5th Street lot, is what we're doing then.
Correct, correct. So the, the rezone was conditional to the minor subdivision replat recommendation, the recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission, and, and that required the rezone and lotline dissolution. They're here for the rezone and lotline dissolution tonight. And then we had discussed in the last meeting, potentially restricting the, restricting any future subdivisions to two total lots, but we can get into that, and I'll talk more about that when everyone joins us and we're ready to go, and, and I can introduce this, this-
I just want to confirm, I just want to confirm that Mary is on. I think maybe she lasted and called back in. Is that you, Mary, are you still here?
Yeah, so, yeah, I am on.
Okay. Thank you.
Miranda, this is Steve. Are we, are we, you getting any feedback from us on our, from our-
I am. It, it is kind of challenging.
Anytime you guys start, anytime somebody else starts talking, we have to mute you, otherwise there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah, because I'm seeing that we're getting some background noise, and there's nothing in this room that's doing it, so it's got to be feedback of some kind.
This is one of those weird, that's why I intermittently mute you, and I, you know, I-
It's not personal.
We've been doing the same here, but, sorry about that, I don't know what it is.
But see, you were just talking, you were, we weren't talking, you were talking, and we're, and we hear all the chatter, too. It's weird.
Yeah, it gets weird for me because I have to, because I have Chris Parry on the phone with me, I'm doing it in two different settings, so mine is great.
I can tell you, it's quiet in my office, people jail, so I don't think I have any ambient noise going on in here. And you let me know when you're ready, Roger, if we have everyone back at the meeting and everyone has gotten their break done, and we have our public, we have some public in attendance tonight to comment on this item, and I'm ready when you are.
Okay. All right. Is everybody, is anybody not here, speak up?
You're hilarious.
All right, well, the next agenda item is consideration of a rezone application with co-application for lotline dissolution, public hearing at 3 East 5th Street for Mary Huggins, trustee for Margaret A. McMullen Trust. Staff, would you give us the introduction?
Certainly, thank you, Chair. This is a rezoning application, application.
Cynthia, Cynthia, just a minute. I just need to say, last, at the last meeting, Lynn recused herself. Linda Glasser, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I think we need to, you need to recuse yourself.
Yes, yes, I was just going to bring that up. I need to recuse myself on this, yes.
Okay. Linda Glasser is a neighbor and, and had dinner and discussed the project, she knows the applicant, and so as a commissioner, she is recusing from the discussion and the vote on this item. So, continue on, this is a consideration of a rezone application and a co-application for lotline dissolution and public hearing at 3 East 5th Street for Mary Huggins. She is the trustee for the Margaret A. McMullen Trust, that is lots 5, 6, 7, 8 in Block 5 Netherlands, bulky edition. She is a trustee on behalf of the Margaret A. McMullen Trust. They had applied previously, they came last month for a minor subdivision replat, they wanted to do a subdivision, a minor subdivision, excuse me, of the western tail of a triangular portion of 34 Forest, that is to the north of 3 East 5th Street, which is their longtime family cabin. Mary indicated in her narrative that her great grandfather built that cabin and had two sisters who also lived on the hillside. These are very longtime residents and folks who've been in Netherlands and coming up to Netherlands. This particular application is for a rezoning application and lotline dissolution in order to complete the process of a replating of the 3 East 5th Street lot to add square footage from 34 Forest. So that previous minor subdivision request, the Planning Commission had recommended approval to the Board of Trustees, it has not gone to the Board of Trustees yet. This application, we were going to include the whole package to the Board of Trustees for their consideration. As conditional, at the last review last month for the minor subdivision replat, the Planning Commission had required a rezoning application in this lotline dissolution to complete the process. This is a, the issue with these two lots is they're in two different zoning districts, so 34 Forest is in the-
So 34 Forest is in the low density residential district and that requires 16,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The three East Fifth Street lot, just to the south of it, and they are adjacent lots, uh, north-south, is in the medium density residential district and that requires 8,000 square foot per dwelling unit. The concern was, uh, registered with the applicant that additional square footage added to a lot in the medium density residential district would then increase square footage enough that they could potentially develop three lots, uh, in the, you know, three houses by right or potentially, whether this applicant or if the lot was, uh, sold someday that they could do three, um, buildings or three subdivisions on this lot. So there was some concern registered with the applicant. And, uh, Mary Huggins, on behalf of the family trust, said that they would be willing to undergo a restrictive covenant, so to speak, in order to prevent that from happening so that if there were any future subdivisions, it would max out at two total lots. Um, just to the east of the existing cabin, that is the family cabin in three East Fifth Street, there is a sort of vacant area that is, uh, in the existing three East Fifth Street lot that looks like it would be easily developed, um, and accessible. The intent of this application, the entire process with respect to replating is to protect the northern, uh, part, uh, the, the area to the north of the three East Fifth Street cabin, which is, uh, currently a part of that 34 Forest until the minor subdivision replat and these other applications, if they are approved at the Board of Trustees. So that area, the applicants have expressed a desire to keep any development from happening up there. They had concerns. They would like to sell off the 34 Forest Road property. And that is a rental for them and they wanted to sell it off. They didn't feel like that long triangular tail that runs, um, and meets, uh, the road there that that would be beneficial to anyone if they were to purchase 34 Forest. And it could potentially affect their family cabin with drainage on there. Someone could put up an ADU or build, um, a house or something like that if they were able to build within the setback, uh, requirement and they wanted to protect the area from that. So this, uh, proposal would add additional square footage. So the three East Fifth Street lot has an existing square footage of 16,773 square feet. So it's about twice the size of the, uh, requirements for the district for the medium density. And that would be augmented by the addition of plus or minus 10,115 square feet from the 34 Forest lot. And that would bring the three East Fifth Street lot to 26,815 square feet roughly. Both of these parcels are under the ownership of the Margaret A. McMullen Trust and Mary Huggins, the trustee. She had spoken about, um, in her narrative about her parents' intention, longtime intention to preserve the three East Fifth Street cabin that their great grandfather built. And that was why they originally purchased the 34 Forest lot specifically to prevent any development to the north of their family cabin. They desire to sell that family cabin off and that is if the request for the minor subdivision replat, rezone and lot line dissolution as a package are approved at the Board of Trustees. The Planning Commission was unable to review this all three applications at once because we've been kind of log jammed at the Planning Commission here in the busy season, um, with applications. We already had two applicants last month that were already in our queue. And so, uh, we split up this application and we did the minor subdivision replat, uh, review last month. And this is the rezoning lot line dissolution. All the applications were publicly noticed. Um, there weren't any town staff concerns with the request. There were some neighbors who do have concerns and I, I know there's a neighbor who is, um, joining us in the, um, on this, uh, virtual meeting to be able to speak to the application. There was also with respect to, um, a, uh, a comment about the footpath and that was actually in the packet. And that noted that, uh, they were hoping to keep that footpath that connects to Forest Road and continue that. The applicant had indicated she had no issues with that. I'm not sure if that's something that wants to be, if there isn't a formal easement, if that's a something the Planning Commission would like to have a formal easement on that. I had explained to Mary that, um, that could be a way to contain the size of that trail as things tend to grow over time. So the length and the width could be contained if it was a, a formal easement process, um, to, uh, preserve that, that trail access there. And, um, she didn't indicate any issues with continuing that trail, um, that, that, uh, trail use connection there. And I can answer any questions of the.
Any questions of the Plan Commission? If not, then we will, uh, we'll. Yeah, okay. And I need to ask the question, the applicant, this is electronic, uh, meeting and I know that you participated last month. So do you have any issues with the electronic public hearing? Should we proceed?
Chair Cornell was asking you if you had any issues with the virtual format review of your application. It's, it's a challenge. Um, so we just wanted to make sure you were on board and you were okay with your application.
I, I think it's very good. Thank you, Cynthia. It's perfect.
So Mary, uh, you have a floor. Any comments you'd have? Cynthia certainly gave a good background for this year. Chance to, uh, perform the, uh.
So Cynthia said it perfectly about the path that goes up there. I mean, it's been there as long as I can remember, at least 60 years and, um, you can tell it's a path and I'm fine with anyone using it. I mean, that's fine. Whatever you guys need to do to make that, you know, more official, that's fine with me.
I have a crack too. Part of your proposal was that, uh, the new lot created by the lot line dissolution, that there would be a maximum of two lots if in the future was ever subdivided, uh, that you want it to be a maximum of two lots with the lots being facing Fifth Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Um, again, is there any, any Plan Commission questions this time? Otherwise, I'd like to open the public hearing. And we'll come back to the Plan Commission. There any, anything that the Plan Commission needs to ask right now? If not, uh, open the hearing.
Uh, this is Karen, Karen Blakemore. I, I do have some questions.
Okay, Karen.
So, let's see. Oh, on the, on the, um, survey, I see that the, um, driveway for the Forest Drive property crosses the, um, proposed new lot line. So do we need to, um, does that need to be fixed prior to, um, doing the rezoning and the lot line dissolution? So, uh, do we need to, um, uh, either relocate that driveway or provide an easement?
So I thought it was already an easement. I mean, it's always been considered an easement, but, um,
Because.
I didn't know what you need to, to do that officially. I mean.
Well, the, the, um, the proposed lot line that runs between, um, lot A and lot B.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That, that's a new lot line. And so my question is, and I don't know if, if this is for staff or, or if it's for the, um, other commissioners. Do we, does that, with that new line going between the lot A and lot B, the driveway for the property on lot B, um, crosses, uh, over, um, that lot line. And so, so there wouldn't have been an easement for it because that lot line didn't exist.
Karen, that's a very good question. So it would appear to me that either an easement needs to be made or we actually need to change the property line a little bit. So maybe that's, uh, we could, maybe that needs to be part of the motion that, that that needs to be resolved before we go to the Board of Trustees. Staff, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, can you, can you, uh, clarify a little further and, and, uh, Miranda, would you zoom in a little bit more so I could see some detail there? Is that possible?
Basically, she's saying that the driveway crosses over the new proposed lot line. You'll see the gravel drive. And so, you know, my thought is that that would be something that they would have to resolve as far as just having it, having it, uh, come out sooner before the lot line.
Does that need to be resolved prior to?
Well, right now you're, you're talking about a reason.
Okay.
So that's, uh, you know, I, I thought you guys kind of had this conversation already last night. I've decided to recommend to the Board of Trustees to move forward with that piece of it. And now you're looking at the rezone.
And, and, and I think that would, uh, yeah, that would merit some consideration. So we'd want to make sure that, um, that the driveway is going to, um, either have an easement or, um, how, how you want to officially address that. So we don't leave, uh, 34 Forest without access.
So couldn't, couldn't we have the assessor redraw that line? Is that possible?
I mean, you could contain, I, I don't know that 34 Forest, if they can contain the parking there or if that, you know, if that access needs, needs to be that way. Or, uh, potentially an easement could, could be provided for the gravel drive for any future owner so they could access it the way it exists now. Um, but you'd have to ensure that they have access to 34.
Yeah, so what's easier to ease in or just redrawn, uh, the, the plat, the replat? I mean.
I, I think, I, I mean, the, the, the Planning Commission, um, is making a recommendation on this proposal. So I think redrawing is, uh, um, would be challenging for them to make a decision if they don't understand what they're looking at. And so, um, if, 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 if it feels like, um, you know, you want to check in with the family trust in your attorney and see if the, if, if, if this, if this is the direction you want to keep going, um, that would be beneficial. Um, in terms of time, we're pretty log jammed here tonight. So I mean, if, if this is a, if this is a deal breaker, then we should, um, address this now. If not, um, I think it's feasible to provide an easement. I will say, you know, that, that, that can be a challenge, but, uh, it's not challenging in, in creating an easement. It's a, it's a challenge in hoping neighbors get along and they won't have future problems and things like that. But if it, uh, I mean, if it serves the purposes, if it serves the purposes of the family trust to maintain that gravel drive as it is, um, with no more development that's going to happen back to the parcels below it. Provide a, a legal easement on that gravel drive that is noted 34 Forest. Because I think, if I remember the way that property is, I wa, I walk past that area quite a lot, just in general. It's a good, uh, walk-up bridge and, uh, forest. That, that concrete wall that's shown there, you, you start to get steep and, um, and the way the, the, the that 34 Forest, it's set down a little bit. I don't know if a driveway can be pulled right off of the road from there. Do you suspect that's the case?
Yeah, I think, I think they need the easement. I mean, so, yeah.
Okay. So if, if it is something that the family trust finds amenable to have an easement across that parcel, you know, that area noting the gravel drive, there's a permanent easement for the 34 Forest, so they're not going to be stuck without any access. And if that meets needs of the family trust, I think that could just be, uh, a recommendation by the Plan Commission that easement, the legal easement be obtained to ensure that 34 Forest has access. And that's a process that you would undertake, um, and you can give us that paperwork, uh, to include.
Okay.
So before any, you know, and, and even if that's something that needs to be done, um, that may be a condition at the Board of Trustees, but obviously before any recordation at the, uh, county, provided that these applications are recommended for approval at the Planning Commission to the Board of Trustees and then the Board of Trustees if they recommend approval. That prior to, as this has developed, that any notes are included, uh, dedication and easement of that gravel driveway there. So it's included on that, uh, plat document. And I think that's, um, whether that has to be done at the Board of Trustees. If they feel like they can make that decision, uh, to recommend approval with that specific condition having to be done and any other conditions.
Okay, so if I had, if I had the surveyor draw the easement on that plat now and you could send that to the board, that would kind of.
Yeah, and it's a legal easement. It's a legal easement. So your attorney would have to, or, you know, a, a legal easement document would be drawn up and recorded with the county so that, um, it's, it's established and, and fairly set in stone as an encumbrance on the lot that it does include, uh, easement access.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Something to consider.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted, we're trying to sell that property, so trying to pin down everything we have to do.
Right. So that, that's, uh, Karen Blakemore, that was a very excellent observation. I think in the last meeting, we actually didn't see that line going across. So maybe we did. It was almost treated as two lots with a tail. Is there, actually, as far as tonight, is it's actually dissolution of the east-west and subdivision. So in lot, some ways, we can proceed. Say we get an easement for the driveway. So I think we are fine, excuse me, proceeding. Are there any other questions about the, uh, Plan Commission this time before we take it to public, uh, comment? All right, um, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for comment and we have, we will have three minutes to speak. We have any to speak on this subject?
Hi, my name is Julie Nanea and I am the owner of the adjacent lot.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, um.
Give your, uh, name and adri, your address.
Yes, absolutely. Julie Nanea. I'm at 46 Forest Road. I used to be a Netherlands resident. Now I am an owner. First and foremost, I actually have no objective to the rezoning here. I think that what the family is trying to do makes a lot of sense and supports them trying to hold on to their family cabin. I would ask that that lot, the covenant be kept in place so that can only be developed into two units instead of potentially three. Where I really do have concern though is this replat that we're looking at here. It actually depicts, we've got a boundary issue dispute. So that portion of the lot that is at the far eastern end of lot B that is in the utility easement, it is my understanding that that's actually my property. So I apologize for the late notes that I sent the commission, but I actually only got notice of these proposals on Monday. When we got a notice delivered to my tenant at the house, so I hadn't had an opportunity to weigh in on this at the previous hearing. I provided the commission with a ILC, an improvement location certificate for my property that does show that that utilities line is within my boundaries. I've also checked my title search again and it records that utility easement on that far eastern side. And while I recognize that you've got to do a formal survey to base a plat off of, I haven't had the opportunity to do that, to dispute this plat because I just learned this on Monday. So respectfully, um, this plat was based on a 1981 survey. There are a lot of comments, if you read in the surveyor's notes, questioning some of those monuments. We definitely have a boundary dispute that I'm going to have to follow up with Mary about. And really, this drawing being out in the public feels like it's. And really, this drawing being out in the public feels like it's essentially an implicit cloud on my title. And I would like to ask that the commission actually does not move on this until we have an opportunity to resolve that because even though I support what the family is trying to do in whole, that portion is, is a part of my property and shouldn't be reflected in that. And furthermore, if, if the commission is counting on that parcel to be part of the basis of this rezoning decision, it's in dispute. And I look forward to working with Mary and her family to resolve that. But I, I did provide information showing that that boundary line is indeed, and it's the same as on the Boulder County Assessor site, I should add too. They also, and I know that's once again GPS, but I would like the opportunity to do a formal survey and assessment and come back to this commission and the Netherlands planners with that assessment to show that that's on my land. Thank you for your consideration.
I don't know, should we, uh, at this time, I'm going to continue the public hearing and then we will go back to staff about that question. But is there anybody else that wants to speak to this matter or the agenda item? For the rezon? Is there anybody else there? If not, then okay, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, ask staff, um, maybe a little input on.
Chair Cornell, Chair Cornell? Yeah, my, my suggestion is let's ask the applicant, uh, what her response is to that and see if she's willing to work with the neighbor.
So, so my, my comment is that we have been trying to get ahold of this person, Julie, for like four years and her, um, contact information is not in the public records, the Boulder County records. So we had no way of getting ahold of her when this survey was done. And we went to the town and we asked them to notify her of this situation four years ago. And, um, from what I understand, she knew about it. So for it to come up now does not make any sense to me. Um, I think we should proceed with what we're doing here.
My only, my only question or thought would be that, that we're talking about the forest lot, the Forest Road lot, the east boundary, is that what we're speaking about? Is that correct, Cynthia?
You're on mute, Cynthia.
So we're talking about the.
Yes, yes, correct.
Um, you know, the issue would be that if we had to do, if, if that determined that the property on the Forest Road was actually smaller, or is there quite a bit of room there that it would fall underneath the zoning district for low density and then it would be a non-conforming lot? If, if that gets resolved somehow then, or changed down in the future? We need to keep that lot with enough square footage to be in low, low density, correct?
Correct. They do show a proposal of, uh, 18,212 square feet, uh, with the change. And so that would be some, uh, 2,000 square feet over the district, the required district size. But I think, I mean, it is a, 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 a relevant point to be made. And, and as Julie did note, she would have to have, uh, some sort of boundary survey done. An ILC is, uh, those are pretty loose and they're used for mortgage purposes, but they don't, um, have a lot of legitimacy. I spoke with a county surveyor, Lee Stedell, today, a Netherlands resident and land surveyor about that. And he had suggested that, um, they get a boundary survey if she had concerns and that way they could be compared against each other. The language on the ILC definitely says it's not to be used for fences or buildings or future property lines. The, the, the concerns that I would have, so on one hand, I would say it's the eastern boundary and obviously that, that square footage concern is really relevant, uh, Chair Cornell, and I think that's an important point to make. It's not, um, the side where action is necessarily proposed to be happening. Although the, 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 the part that concerns me is that we have 10 years from registering a document like an ISP to make changes and changes, you know, can happen and can be made. When you're submitting these documents, there's a lot of signatures that need to be obtained and everything else and the chair signs off on it, the mayor signs off on it. Miranda and I would attest those signatures. It gets recorded at the county. It's a lot of work to get these things, uh, done and recorded and things like that. And I'm a big fan of doing it right the first time. And so I think it would be, you know, beneficial to, uh, to, to have it be right. We're, we're in busy season. I know many surveyors are, are, are busy. Uh, I think it would be beneficial to understand from, um, Julie, and she did just find this out and, um, you know, or.
So why did she just find this down now? I don't understand that. I mean, we've been, we've been at this for four years and we couldn't even get her address to send her anything. So I, I don't understand that.
I, I can't really speak to that. Um, this is, you know, somewhat of a neighbor civil issue, but I do think there's some relevance.
No, I mean, so I went up to her house like four years ago and they had renters there. I couldn't even get up to the door because there were dogs outside with no fence on our property. And, um, I couldn't even go to the door. And so I couldn't contact her because there's no address for, to contact her in the record. So, I mean, what are we supposed to do in this situation? I mean, now it comes up and now I, I have to wait.
Chair Cornell. It's a bit unorthodox, um, because we're having a bit of a neighbor dispute, you know, amidst this review.
This is a neighbor dispute. This is something that we talked to the, the town about with concerns and we couldn't contact her because her record is not proper in the, in the Boulder County records. There's no way to contact her. So, I mean, so now you want to shut this down? And we want to sell the property, but now we can't sell it because we have to wait for her to get surveyed? I mean, that doesn't make sense.
What I want to say, Mary, is that it's a bit unorthodox for us, um, in trying to conduct a public hearing and whatnot. The public hearing's been closed, so I just wanted to reach back to Chair Cornell. I can see that Julie had a comment that she wanted to make, but again, um, because we, you know, closed the public hearing. So I want to, I want to, uh, hand that off to Chair Cornell for how he wants to address.
Okay.
This is Karen Garrity.
Yes, Karen.
So you had asked a question, if it were the case that it, some of the property needed to be, redetermined to be with the neighbor, if she could still have enough property. Cynthia, what did you say? Would, would it still work out as a non-conforming lot?
Well, I think that's a good question. I'm not sure if the disputed square footage is going to constitute up to, you know, roughly 2,000, you know, minus 2,012 square feet or so. If, if, if it would bring this proposal below 16,000 feet, yes, it is very concerning to us because we do not want to create a non-conforming lot of that 34 Forest. If it's, uh, you know, a questionable amount of square footage, but we're not, we're not going to reach that, then it's quite possible that the, um, that the neighbors can, can, can reach amenable circumstances. My only concern is that we would be recording this document and we want to make sure it's a correctly recorded document. Again, we have an opportunity up to 10 years to make, you know, changes with land surveys. If, if we notice that there are issues and most land surveys of some sort will say that language on there. You have up to 10 years to dispute any, any claims on this. But I would love to hit it before we record it, of course, if that's possible.
Right. So is there some sort of a conditional recommendation that you could make at this point? That the Planning Commission could make at this point? Noting that there is this issue with the neighbor that needs, this dispute that's going to need to get resolved.
One thing I want to mention too, Chair Cornell, is that if you're going to move forward, just to, to clarify if we're moving forward just the Planning Commission's discussion, because that would limit Mary, your ability to comment. We just want to make sure we're following that script in its entirety.
I missed that. Yes, so I, I feel that, here's how I feel that, yes, this kind of came up the late day, but the, the hearing is for that lot line, east-west lot line and the, uh, rezoning of the, of the new, uh, two lots. Or, or basically to get rid of that, make those two lots one lot and to rezone them. So, and it doesn't really have anything to do with the east side. In the future, it might affect, affect us, but I think the Planning Commission could make a motion to recommend approval of that rezon and the dissolution of that lot line. And, and then that would give whatever, a month, two months for tell it goes to the Board of Trustees or maybe they bring clarity and have that eastern boundary of the Forest Road lot clarified. But we could certainly do the business that was on the agenda tonight of subdivision, uh, excuse me, rezoning and lot line dissolution. So I, I feel that we, uh, should proceed and, and then also recognize that there is an issue with the.
So it would be contingent upon the.
Sure.
Resolution of the lot line.
Would be resolution of the east boundary, really? Yeah. Does that, does that work for Karen Garrity and Cynthia?
You know, it sounds good enough where I was going, but, um, is Jennifer on? Is her lawyer on?
I can ask her back in though if we needed her, so let's call.
I, I just, I guess I would like a lawyer to, uh, to say that's okay.
Uh, this is Karen Blakemore. I think there's an issue with the, um, size of the, um, Forest Drive lot. I'm looking at the assessor's page and it shows that it's 20,659 square feet. The minimum lot size for low-density residential is 16,000 square feet. According to the aim, we are moving 10,000 feet from the Forest Drive resident to the residence to the East Fifth Street. That would give us about 10,000 feet, square feet, on the Forest Drive property, which is not enough square footage for low-density residential.
Hey Karen, we had talked about this at last month's meeting, um, and you might want to look in the aim there. There was a square footage discrepancy I noticed from this, uh, the survey documents and with the assessor's office. And I had checked in with, uh, the county surveyor about that and had him review the survey points that were provided by the surveyor. I had spoken originally with, uh, the applicant surveyor from Green Mountain Surveying about the square footage discrepancy. I note those things as I'm, I, you know, because I, because I'm so heavily reliant on the assessor's website, I take so much information from there. If I notice that there's discrepancies, um, those, I, I'm going to bring those up. So it was in the aim last month, um, noting the square footage discrepancy. I spoke with the surveyor. He told me that he had surveyed it three times and used different methodologies and was still coming up with the same numbers. He provided a methodology in the last packet. I talked to Lee Stedell about that and asked him, uh, his thoughts. And he did his own calculations and felt like, uh, the survey that was provided was, um, very close to what he was coming up with. Like a negligible, negligible amount and that he felt comfortable with the survey. So I, I hope that addresses that. But yeah, those things are definitely concerning to me when I notice them. As I'm trying to line out the analysis and everything else, I, I, I look heavily at those things and, and want to note if there's square footage differences, um, so we can address that.
Thank you. We do have a lawyer on now, uh, Chair Cornell, if you would like to just do a brief recap. And, um, she is listening in now.
Well then, I think either Cynthia or Karen Garrity, I, Cynthia probably should explain to Jennifer or Carrie the issue. So, so we're not all speaking, getting her mixed up.
I can do that. Okay, sure. Hi Jennifer, thanks for joining us. There is a question here. We have a, a, a neighbor of this application and they are a neighbor to the east at 46 Forest Road. So that upper lot there, that long triangular lot that was, uh, proposed to be, uh, the minor subdivision last month and we're looking at the rezon and the lot line dissolution that affects more of the frame house there in your lower left side. That's on 3 East Fifth Street. The question that the neighbor has is a, a boundary dispute between what is being shown on her ILC and the improvement survey plat that's provided here. And she has concerns about the eastern boundary. I don't know if the question of concern is that it would, it would constitute, um, that proposed Lot B shows 18,212 plus or minus square feet. That is enough for the low-density residential district that requires 16,000 square foot per dwelling unit. If there is, um, a discrepancy affecting the neighbor, uh, that's Julie Nania who's on with us today. And, um, if that, if that, if that square footage brought it below 16,000 feet, then obviously it wouldn't be compliant with the district. If it, if it doesn't, then it may, you know, uh, be more of a neighbor dispute that would have to be resolved, uh, by the neighbor providing a, uh, boundary survey. And, and she has spoken about doing that, but hadn't had time to prepare that, obviously, before this meeting. Is it possible for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation? They are looking at specifically rezon and lot line dissolution that affects more of 3 East Fifth Street. Could they make a, uh, recommendation that, that, uh, this is contingent upon resolution of this eastern boundary line? Is that legally sound? Is that, is that capturing everything, Roger Court, Roger?
Oh, okay.
Do you feel like that captures it, Karen?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
So, but you need a timeframe, you need a timeframe. You need to say that they get their survey by a certain timeframe. We can't let this go on forever, okay?
Mary, this is the time for the commissioners to be having a discussion and they're talking to the town attorney right now.
Okay. So was this property included then in, um, in the, in the replat minor subdivision?
Correct. This property, 34 Forest Road, which is that, uh, that essentially, you know, this triangular parcel, um, that, that was included in the last application. That last application, they made a recommendation of approval. It has not gone to the Board of Trustees yet. They made a recommendation of approval and that was conditional upon this rezon and lot line dissolution. This, this, uh, eastern boundary issue that's being brought up, uh, the applicant said this has kind of been going on for four years. Although I, I would, that, I'm, I hadn't known about that. Um, and I do not know if the area of concern is such that it's, it's going to bring the square footage, uh, to a place. It may be negligible, it may not. I'm sure it's not negligible to the neighbor who's, uh, in question about it.
Okay. I'm just, let me take a look at this really quick. I'm looking at the code.
Okay, I, because we had three applications that were, um, we, we already had two applicants in the queue last month. So we split this application up for Mary Huggins in that we did the minor subdivision replat. That, that review was last month. This is the rezoned lot line dissolution review. I've been allowed a feedback from someone's microphone. Yeah, the feedback is pretty loud.
This is absolutely terrible.
This is absolutely terrible.
Steve, can you hear yourself?
Mary Ann Rodak, can you hear us?
I'm not sure whether I can hear you. They are muted.
Okay. So, so all of these applications would go as one complete packet to the board of trustees, who'd review them individually, but they have not been reviewed at the board of trustees. So, so there's still a process with the minor subdivision replat, so if there's conditions that need to be attached to that, it could still be done at the board of trustees.
Yeah. It seems like this is an issue that is better for the replat, minor subdivision. I don't know if it was brought up at that point in time.
It was not, however, the applicant indicated that she didn't receive notice. Unfortunately, we've been getting notices back due to the assessor's website. If the address shows a physical address in Nederland and it doesn't have a P O box, it used to be that the post office would just send those to the right person. Now they just sticker them with a return to sender and they send them back to the town. So I walked up these notices, because I noticed a number of them that were near to this proposal, and I wanted to make sure those folks were getting, getting these notices. So I went up one afternoon and walked the notices, and if the neighbors were there, I had an opportunity to talk to them about the application and explain and answer any questions they may have, which I would do if they came to my office asking about the notice. But I didn't get to talk to Julie, because tenants there, and I wasn't able to speak to the tenants. I tried twice to knock on the door, and then I just left the notice in the door, hoping someone would get it. And then her tenant got it and brought it to her attention. So she, this, this was what she said, she was, it was just brought to her attention, essentially, Monday.
Okay. Let me just see here.
I think we're back. How is that? Hold on.
So Roger and Steve, because you've joined now in two different formats, that's where the feedback's coming from. So I don't know if you had to like leave and come back?
Can you kill one of them?
I can kill one of them. I'm going to do it. Do we have, do we have a, do we have a title commitment? Did the application for the dissolution of lot lines include a title commitment or ownership and encumbrances report?
I do not think she provided an O and E report. I saw affidavits of ownership and quit claims, but if additional information needs to be provided, we can ask the applicant to do that, for sure.
Okay, I mean, that's part of the 17-73 for dissolution of interior lot lines is the paragraph B2 does require a title commitment or ownership and encumbrances report.
Okay. And, and that is not, you know, for that lot line dissolution, that's going to dissolve a lot line between essentially that western tail of 34 Forest and 3 East Fifth Street. So it, although that should be provided, it's not actually going to affect this, this concern of the neighbor, because that's actually over at the eastern boundary of the northern lot there, with her property that's adjacent to the east. So the ownership and encumbrances report would, would, would be more on the end of, I mean, it would, it would, it would show that for 34 Forest, but what is being dissolved is not the part that-
But it pertains to the lot that is going to be dissolved and make, make it one lot, rather than two, correct?
Yes. Yes.
It pertains to, it pertains to the new lot that was created with the minor subdivision.
Correct. So, so it, it, I mean, it's, it's relevant and a relevant condition that the applicant should provide, but it doesn't really touch this question of the neighbor. Julie's question is, is more pertinent to that 34 Forest lot on the east side, to the east and north.
It is not being affected, I, I'm, I'm not understanding, so that, that lot is not being affected by the rezone?
The, the rezoning, what, if the minor subdivision replat is approved at the trustees, and then the rezone lot line dissolution as well, the, the rezone is to take the square footage where it's showing that lot line down, so it would make, where that cleaves that off, it would make all of that 3 East Fifth Street. So the lot line dissolution would be between the northern part above the cabin, and then the part that includes the cabin, that's on the western side. So you're looking on the, on the, on the, the left side of the screen is where that lot line is proposing to be dissolved, and it, and it isn't necessarily the pertinent question that Julie Nania has brought up. Her concern is more, more, so where you see on this retaining wall area of concern-
Cynthia, tell me which map I should be looking at. I'm not, I don't, I don't know what, what I should be looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are, are you able to log into our meeting? This is on page 58, the McMullen Minor Subdivision. So it's on page 58 of the packet, 58 of 74. Okay. Sorry about that. I'm looking at it, so I'm referring to it as if you're looking at it too. I apologize.
I see.
So the concern is really more where you see that, where you see that little vicinity map that's on the right, the upper hand side?
One second here, I'm looking at-
That's okay, yeah. Kind of where that vicinity map is shown, abbreviations are shown.
Hold that page to rotate it here.
Nothing fair. On the right-hand side toward the top is where Julie's property is. So below where the vicinity map is, and kind of in that area, around the abbreviation, so just north of, just above the area where it says abbreviation, her property is there. So she has a concern about that eastern boundary. And I guess, given that we do have another application tonight, and we have a lot of folks on, and for, for time purposes, the question is, can the planning commission move forward on the rezone and lot line dissolution with respect to this eastern boundary dispute? The neighbor has expressed a desire to, to get a formal boundary survey to ensure that her property is protected and that she's, that, that any survey documents are going to align, and that there's no question of, of potentially her square footage on, on the eastern boundary side. But I guess for the commission, they, they want to know, can they legally move forward on the rezone lot line dissolution, you know, on, on reviewing this application, if there is this eastern boundary dispute with the neighbor?
Okay, and the eastern boundary is where the, is near-
Yeah, neighbors, gravel, parking, see note two, retaining wall area of concern, see note three. There's, there's a few areas of concern there, monumented overlap, the north-south center line. So, so her property is there, in that, in that area, and that is, and her concern is that, is that from her ILC, which is not an actual survey, but from, you know, she, she has concerns from the document that she had in her title documentation, that there is a question of that eastern boundary line. So-
Okay.
Obviously, a dispute that needs to be resolved between the neighbors, and I, I don't know if it's, I mean, it's obviously a pertinent concern, I'm not trying to disabuse the concern. I, I don't know if it's pertinent to the rezone lot line dissolution question, although what I had said is, the amount of energy involved in recording these documents and such, and you, you have 10 years to be able to make any corrections on a survey, but it would be, it would be greater to get it done right the first time.
Right.
And put all the energy going into recording it.
Is the lot line going to be dissolved? Is that showing, where is that lot line showing on this map that's going to be dissolved, that's requested to be dissolved?
Over on the left-hand side, you see the original parcel 234 Forest, and then you see, there is a, if you can, if you, can you, can you show a little bit further over, Miranda, to the left?
I can't see that, I, I guess, let me get, I have it locked.
It's okay. So I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be able to refer to the language here. There's a dashed line on the left-hand side, and it shows, it's, there's an arrow pointing to it, it says original parcel, 3 East Fifth Street lot, lots five through eight. That dashed line, that's the lot line that would be dissolved. So over on the other side of Julie's parcel, but that may be, you know, resolution may be a condition of the minor subdivision piece, if you feel like that's, that's more, more pertinent, and I could see that point. Do you see where I'm talking about?
Uh-
Some, it has, it has some survey language there, right above that dashed line on the left-hand side of the screen, and it's right above the dashed line, it's, it's N89, 52 degrees, 46 west, 166, 166, point 87 feet.
Yeah, I see that.
So that is the proposed lot line that would be dissolved. That is the question for tonight, is the rezone and the lot line dissolution. Julie's parcel is on the right-hand side of the screen, and on the, the, you know, to the east of that two-story frame house at 34 Forest. So she owns the property, adjacent to that at 46 Forest, and she has concerns about the, the surveying and boundary lines.
Okay, so the, the property to the west would be part of the new lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so isn't that property then, that would be required to have a title commitment and ownership and encumbrances report?
For the lot line dissolution, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think it, we do need to get this boundary dispute cleared up, because we need to make sure that the lot conforms, the lot that's showing on the survey conforms to what the ownership is.
Okay. So, so surveys take some time, and, and in terms of the applicant's comment, just before I got to clarify the question here, and she had concerns about the timeframe of a survey being done, and, and trying to ensure that there's a reasonable timeframe for this to be done, so that her, she and her family trust can continue on their plans, that parcel that is adjacent to Julie's parcel.
Okay.
Someone's TV needs to be muted.
And the, Julie, can she provide a timeframe as to when she can get the survey completed? I mean, if she's, if she's making this request?
We have, we closed the public comment, but if, if you want to ask that question, she's present right here, and she could probably answer that.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience, Julie.
Okay, my apologies, it wouldn't let me unmute. I just genuinely found out about this on Monday. I would love to resolve this as soon as possible. I have gotten all the documents I have for you guys already. I will continue to dig up whatever I can and get a survey as soon as possible. I don't know what that timeframe looks like, because I don't know how backed up folks are in Nederland, but I would like to resolve this, absolutely.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Thanks, Julie.
Cynthia, can you tell, you can say what's a reasonable timeframe, what would be a reasonable timeframe to get this completed?
I would like to be able to say that, but I don't know what the waiting period is for surveyors in Nederland area or Boulder County. Can you give me an estimate?
I'm from Boulder. It's not very hard. So Cynthia, can you tell us what a reasonable timeframe is, and let's, let's just get it done within that period of time?
I, I, I appreciate that. It is pretty subjective, because surveyors are pretty backed up, they're in busy season. It depends on the surveyor. Some larger companies have a lot of surveyors on staff, and they can come out quickly. Some don't have a lot of surveyors, and they may be backed up. So I guess it depends on who Julie would go with, and, and what their schedule is. I, I think, you know, it may take some discussion, and, and maybe she can get to us after she contacts a surveyor and finds out to understand.
That's not acceptable. That's not acceptable. We need some kind of timeframe which is reasonable. I mean, we're trying to sell a property, and like I said, this has been going on for four years. It has not been going on for four years.
Guys, we need to take, get this back into line. This is Roger Cornell. Jennifer, would there be, seeing how the planning commission is just makes recommendation, could the, would it be wrong for the planning commission, please, to recommend the lot that, the east-west lot dissolution and the rezone, subject to, you know, these plot issues being resolved? But the agenda item tonight really is separate from this argument that's going on between the neighbors, or the discussion. But I understand, I just, but that's my question is, could we even just do this part? We already do recommend-
Right.
Contingent upon the resolution.
Right, right.
Well, it, it seems, right, it seems to me that there's a dispute of the ownership of this, of the lot in question, one, one, a portion of the lot. And it's related to the minor subdivision, related to the dissolution of the interior lot line, ownership has to be established.
Okay.
I think you can make the recommendation contingent on, I mean, we're not the ones to decide, you're not the, the party to decide whether who owns what piece of the land, who has the ownership. But you also don't have a title commitment or an ownership and encumbrances report.
So are you, are you telling the planning commission then that we should not proceed with the recommendation?
I'm saying that you could proceed with the recommendation with a condition that this, that you can get resolution of the boundary.
So it's contingent on the resolution of the boundary?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to do it.
Get that. I'm just writing this down here. I, I think then let's just go ahead and proceed then. We've closed the public hearing. Uh, we've closed the public hearing. I will, okay, the staff, I think we, you've given us all the input you can. Is, uh, let's go around the comments from the, uh, planning commission members. Steve, you have any comments?
Um, no, the only other comment I have is to make sure that you don't forget about the easement of the trail and the driveway to be included in any, um, recom, any, um, recommendation.
So we need to stop there, yes, because, an hour ago, I thought we were so close. So, uh, yes, that came up, we do have the letters and the idea, so, um, what was the staff's recommendation, Mary? I thought they felt like it was okay to do it, but whether we should do an easement of the trail or, um, you know, how is that supposed to be handled? I'm almost losing my memory here.
One option is since they have to redo the, the whole plat, they could fix the driveway issue at the same time. Or do an easement.
So, uh, yeah, we just leave the, the easement of the path, uh, to be resolved. Again, it's not really a gender item. So was that the recommendation Cynthia that we wanted to do? That that would just be, uh, the owners would choose to either do an easement or not to do an easement?
Sure, that could be a condition of the planning commission. I think that, uh, Mary on a, on a use level was, was fine with continuing the use of the trail. I think she was amenable if the planning commissioner, if, you know, if it was desired to have an actual easement, um, set upon the trail. I had spoken to her about that and, and that may be, uh, a benefit for the family trust to, um, you know, understand the size of the trail easement so that it doesn't grow into a road. Um, because it is, you know, it does widen in certain places and then kind of, kind of goes down. It's been a long time used, um, trail. There was the easement for the driveway as, uh, Vice Chair Williams mentioned. The attorney had mentioned the ownership and encumbrances report or title commitment provision. There was a, um, desire to prevent any future subdivisions and limit that at two. So I would think those would be the kind of conditions that you'd be looking at. And then any other, um, considerations that the commission's review.
Okay, Commissioner, so, uh, back to Steve, do you have, other than that, you have all the ones?
Those are it.
Karen Blakemore, do you have anything to comment?
No, I, I do. I was looking at that, um, property line, um, dispute the, between the two properties on, um, Forest. And it seems to me, I just did a rough calculation, that that would be like two thousand five hundred square feet, which would then reduce the, um, lot size to less than the sixteen thousand required for low-density residential. And so I'm thinking that maybe the owner wants to first resolve that dispute and then possibly propose a new, um, uh, east-west property line um, that would be shifted a little bit, oh, north-south property line, that would be shifted a little bit to the west. Um, so that that, um, uh, new, new sized, smaller lot on Forest would, um, still fulfill the requirements of a low-density residential and maybe fix the, um, the driveway issue at the same time. So I, I think that they should come back to the planning commission really, um, once they resolve that, um, property line dispute.
All right, could it, Billy Giblin, any input?
I thought this one was going to be a slam dunk, but I guess not. So Karen, first of all, thanks for, um, pointing out the driveway. That was a good, uh, good, good observation that we all missed. And, um, I think a lot of what you just said makes sense to me, just really. I, I do think, you know, Mary, sorry for the frustration, um, just probably the nature of the beast of just property owners not, who don't live in town, not always being, uh, easy to find, but I do think you guys working this out together, step one, possible movement of that, uh, property line for sake of just the, the needed square footages and, and taking care of that driveway and, um, and bringing it back to us when those things are cleaned up, sounds like a very good, uh, plan.
Jim Reese, your comments? Jim? Major Jim?
I have nothing further to add.
Chris Parry?
I concur with much of what's been said already. Sorry for Mary's dismay of this, but it is something that has to be done. And I convey to Miranda a number of a local surveyor that she can give to Julie so that I can get this resolved quicker.
All right, good input, Chris, thank you. Stephanie Herring, your input?
Uh, no additional comments. I concur with holding off until the dispute is resolved. Thanks.
All right, um. She's abstained.
Oh, no, she's abstained, sorry.
Um, all right, so I, I think we're, we're there. I, it's, it's unbelievable. As Billy said, it should have been a slam dunk. Um, so I think there needs to be a resolution of the plat boundary. And as Karen pointed out, as, as we got to, that the driveway would be helpful to actually have the easement or change, you know, the lot boundary there for the driveway for the Forest Road, uh, property. So, um.
Do we continue?
Do we, I need to get staff to think, should we make a motion to continue this hearing?
Then get Linda's comment.
No, she.
No, she, she's not here.
Oh, she's confused, okay.
Yes, you would need to continue it, but you have to continue it to a date certain.
To the next meeting?
Well, then we just have to put to the next meeting. If they're not ready, then we continue. Right. I, can I get a motion to continue the rezoning application with co-application for a lot line dissolution of, uh, three East Fifth Street for Mary Hoggins to continue to the next meeting in September?
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third.
I'll make the motion.
That's, uh, Commissioner Giblin?
Back in.
We have a motion, second and a third. Cynthia, roll, Cynthia, please.
Yes. Commissioner Blake? For continuation to September twenty-third. Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Cornell?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes to continue this application to September twenty-third Planning Commission meeting with the hope that the, uh, boundary dispute between neighbors is resolved and other issues. Um, Mary, we can talk about this if you wanna, um, if you wanna look at, uh, what would need to be, um, addressed before.
All right, that was, uh, quite the, uh, meeting discussion, so. I need some.
I don't have five minutes.
Well, we see guidelines now, I don't need five minutes. Is everybody here and we were able to continue? Hopefully, um, the next item won't be quite as long. I, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and, uh, let's try, we have to do this by eleven o'clock. Um, so the next item is consideration, special review use application related to an integrative veterinary medicine practice at ninety-eight South First Street. Cynthia, do you want to go over the aim?
Sure, um, as you noted, it is a consideration of a special review use and this is related to an integrative veterinary medicine practice at ninety-eight West First Street. Um, this is for applicant Dr. Kelly Keeney. She's under contract to purchase the property. Uh, I noted in the aim that I said ninety-eight South First Street. I apologize, I said that in the agenda item, but it is noted in the summary correctly as ninety-eight West First Street. Sorry, that confused me. This is for Mandala Integrative Veterinary Care LLC at ninety-eight West First Street. The property is located in the Central Business District and the proposed veterinary use is included and it's in a large group of commercial use uh, in the use group, which includes, but is not limited to animal hospitals, enclosed kennels, car washes, cleaning and laundry plants, cold storage lockers, building material and equipment dealers, wholesaling services and construction trades. And these type of uses are allowed via SRU approval. So she outlines her business scope in the SRU application and it addresses supplemental regulations about noise, dust and animal excrement. The narrative doesn't directly speak to the goals of the comprehensive plan, although Nederland does have a lot of pet animal residents. And, uh, I think I, um, had noted that there's, I think there's two veterinarians actually in town, so this would have a third option. Um, according to Boulder County Assessor's website, this is a two thousand five hundred and seventy square foot parcel. It contains an eight hundred square foot, uh, commercial office building that was built in nineteen fifty. It's been operated as a real estate office since nineteen ninety-eight. There is an improvement survey, uh, plat that in, it tucks in all the elements of the site plan that met the requirements of sixteen dash fifty-two application. And so they, if there's anything you, you didn't note on the site plan, um, but I believe the architect tucked everything into that ISP. Proper public noticing was made in the newspaper and posted on the property. She notes in her narrative, there is an upcoming, uh, tip project, that's the road project. And we had talked about that at the Planning Commission with Chris Pelletier previously. And so she is aware of that project that's gonna happen. And, uh, she's also aware of the encroachment of the building and the associated parking that's on the town's right-of-way. So the town would need a parking agreement or an encroachment agreement of sorts, an encroachment, uh, agreement for the building, um, but then working out a parking. The, uh, building itself at eight hundred square feet would require two parking spaces with, uh, um, one space for two employees on staff, so they would need a total of three spaces. Um, and I think that's mainly it for me. I, uh, will turn that over to you, Chair Cornell, to introduce the applicant, Kelly Keeney.
All right, Kelly, you're here. This is a electronic hearing, does, do you agree to proceed with the electronic hearing?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, give us your name and your address and you have the floor to describe your project.
Okay, I'm Kelly Keeney, address one six four Gordon Creek Road. We're just on Sugarloaf Road, but it's a Boulder address. Um, yeah, so our, we've had an existing veterinary practice kind of up, tucked into our home property for the last four years up here. It's kind of a hybrid practice where I've been doing like part-house calls and testing the waters for a brick and mortar. And it's been really successful, so we're ready to expand. Um, but Ned is our hometown, we're just about eight minutes away. So it was logical to kind of seek our brick and mortar space there. Um, I'm not sure what else to tell you guys. The practice is integrative, so we, we, um, don't have surgery or, um, boarding or anything like that. It's pretty holistic and boutiquey, so not a ton of clients come in there on a day-to-day basis. It's longer appointment times, we do more herbs and acupuncture. Um, people come from all over other states, um, just because it's kind of a niche practice. Seems like a good fit for that space.
Okay. Excuse me, here I go again. It's been, I'm fine. It's, uh, I think I'm fine. I will, uh, open up, I guess, first thing out is the planning commission, is there anybody from the commission have any questions at this time with the applicant? Before we go to the public hearing? All right, if not, is there anybody from the public who wants to speak to this? You have three minutes. Is there anybody still here?
I'm still here, but I don't have a comment.
Kelly, okay, no, I got you. Um, all right, well then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. Um, I'm, I was, Karen Blakemore, I will start with you because you've been doing a fantastic job with some really good questions. So thank you, Karen. So Karen Blakemore, your comments?
Okay, I'm gonna make it quick because I know we want to get done by eleven. You know, I'm, I'm supportive of all the, the applications tonight, I just wanted to say that. Um, I'm wondering if we need an easement for the building and steps because of their encroachment on First Street. I'm also wondering if the parking can be done in the rear of the building. And there was mention in the aim about using park and ride for, um, the employees. And I think park and ride should be reserved for people who are commuting by bus and maybe those who are carpooling, but not by employees in town. That's all I have to say.
Stephanie Herring, do you, any comments?
No, generally, uh, supportive. Definitely need to work out the, the parking and have that conversation with the town, but, um, it seems like a perfectly reasonable use of that space.
Uh, Chris Parry?
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you guys catch that for Chris? I realized I had it muted. Chris, say that again, I realized I had us muted.
Oh, you muted me?
Sorry.
I concur with everything that's been said already. I think it'll be a good fit for the town, let's just resolve little things like parking and stuff like that with it. Thank you and have a good day.
Reese?
Not, say it again.
Jim Reese?
I have nothing further to add.
Stephanie, who's in track, again, Stephanie Herring? There is.
Comments are the same as the first time you asked them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, then, I didn't check, I have somebody check marks by all the names here.
No, he just appreciates your comments twice.
Linda Glasser, thank you for hanging.
I, uh, basically have the same feeling that the rest of the board does with, uh, concerns about the parking, but I think they can be easily addressed. Um, but I think it's a good, uh, plan to move forward with this.
Does, um, yes, I, I agree, again, this is Roger, I agree a hundred percent. The easement encroachment around the street, I certainly saw that from the, uh, certainly at the Assessor's website, go to that, it looks like it's quite a large one. Whether they make parking spaces on either side of the building or around rear, I think they need to do that, or, or they make an agreement with, uh, you know, a neighbor. But three, three spaces seem to be very easy to do. Um, so I, I, I agree a hundred percent with the project and seems like it's actually very low impact and it's something that actually fits, uh, right in that area. Um, I guess I'd ask, uh, any comments about the easement for that, uh, Karen Blakemore brought up? Or we can make a motion contingent upon that? We can make a motion contingent upon that?
Were you asking staff about that?
Yes.
I'm going to shoot on First Street with encroachment. I know it's something that we're gonna be working on. Um, I don't know, Cynthia, if you want to say something more about that.
I haven't been in those discussions as much, but I do know that we are in, um, discussion, kind of trying to figure out how we work out our many encroachments in this town, as we have many.
Especially on First Street.
And then I only, I added, I don't think we've heard from Commissioner Giblin on this one.
Billy, your comments. Billy Giblin?
Yeah, I, I think this seems like a, seems like a great addition. I agree with the parking, but in general, I think, um, this looks like a great proposal and potentially a great position for the town.
And, and to that parking comment, Miranda, so we are working on, on the parking and I know Kelly, our attorney did reach out to your attorney, but hasn't heard back. Um, so I don't know if you want to just put a little plug there in that that will be a piece that we would continue to work on, um, with both attorneys' involvement.
Okay, yeah.
If there's.
We're locked up.
We're having trouble.
Do you need me to help? Chair Cornell?
Yes.
Okay. So it sounds like, um, there were concerns about working out the parking. And so with respect to getting, uh, some solid parking agreement of sorts and, uh, addressing encroachment of the building itself. Commissioner Blakemore had noted, uh, steps. But I know that, uh, Kelly Keeney's attorney was also looking into that encroachment and wanted to ensure that there was an agreement for the encroachment of the building itself. So, um, with those minor issues, once, uh, Chair Cornell is able to, to work that out, um, it looks like we would be in a space of, um, being able to make a recommendation. Are you, are, are you contained over there, Roger? Or do you want me to suggest they, uh, see if anyone is interested in making a motion?
We, uh, I got back online, we got back.
Yeah, we couldn't unmute ourselves.
So, so with, uh, can we get a motion to consider special review use, I mean, to, and approve of the board trustees of a special review use at?
98 West.
Don't move. Jim Reese.
I second that, Linda.
Okay. All right. Let me make sure I'm not muted here. Okay, good. Uh, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Reese, we have a second by Commissioner Glasser, and we'll take the roll call vote. Vice Chair Williams? Do we lose you? Okay, we'll just move on to others. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams? There they are. That's a yes, yes? And Chair Cornell is a thumbs up, a yes? Okay, so we have thumbs up. Fozzy motions here. Motion passes with all in favor. Kelly, we can, uh, talk to you about those requirements as we, uh, move toward the Board of Trustees. In likely September, if you can, if we can get that all taken care of by that time.
It's not working here for our host.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
I need to call, where's your phone? I could call Cynthia.
Roger and Cynthia, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Are you in the house now?
Now we can.
But it says we're.
Oh, okay, what, all right.
Says we're muted.
Well, then we'll just.
Oh.
Well, I was yelling, I was trying to get in there and say that it was part of the motion. Parking space, but I think he certainly had that as part of his major rap.
A parking agreement, yes. And, um, uh, Vice Chair Williams? Yeah, it's an interesting program because when you're unmuted, it shows your microphone with the green. I'm talking, I can see it, I can see it move. Um, like an equalizer, but it says mute.
No, no, I understand that. No, no, we, we were muted and I couldn't unmute us. I couldn't get back to the green.
It was definitely a malfunction.
I don't know what's going on.
All right, so we're, we're all, we all voted approval of that last. So, uh, Staff, you have everything you need. So is there any other business?
None. Was that, was that, uh, was that Commissioner Parry? Yes, and, and a second by Reese?
Yeah.
Awesome. And, uh, all in favor? Say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. So if we're ready to go, meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned at 10:37 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thanks, everyone.
Good job.